Representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respect to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal and conflicts of interest where relevant and an requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber to debate and voting where applicable. Councillors, are there any apologies? I believe there are no apologies. Councillors, the minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,620th meeting held on Tuesday 9 June 2020 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,620th meeting of council held on the 9th of June 2020 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
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 No, the ayes have it.
No.
Councillors, there is a public participant today. You will see in your agenda item is Mr Chris Boyle. He'll be addressing us on the results of the Stand By You Foundation's domestic violence watch trial results. Can I please invite Mr Boyle to join us?
And where am I? There, there I am.
Mr Boyle, welcome. You have five minutes to address the council, beginning when you begin your presentation.
Thank you, Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors. My name is Chris Boyle. I'm the founder and executive director of Stand By You Foundation and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you all. Firstly, allow me to congratulate the council on its recently announced domestic and family violence prevention strategy. As a level of government that is closest to the community, council has a particularly important role to play in addressing the scourge of domestic violence. I am proud to live in a city that looks after its most vulnerable and supports its startups and social enterprises too. Last year, Brisbane City Council stood up to the scourge of domestic violence and supported our Brisbane-founded charity, Stand By You Foundation, to keep 50 children safe from domestic violence. On behalf of those children and their families, I'm here to share with you the meaningful outcomes of that support and thank you. Children like Aaron, who is six, who has learned to ride his bike for the first time, as he and his mum are no longer afraid to go outside in case the ex-partner was hiding in the bushes. And Cindy, who is eight, who is back sleeping in her own bed because she can finally fall asleep at night. And I'll never forget meeting Joe, Henry and Phoenix, siblings who were terrified that their father would find them since he was released from prison. Although they had moved to a new house, they were still scared to leave their home and go to school. Safe was not a feeling familiar to them and escaping a person does not mean you escape from your fear. The look in their eyes when they each received their very own safety watch is etched into my mind forever. Their voices grew louder and their excitement and energy was contagious as they finally saw an immediate and tangible solution to their worries. They asked repeatedly just to be sure. So I can press this button anytime and people will come running to me. Yes, was the answer for most family and friends who chose to be their responders. Somewhat embarrassingly, the children joked that Chris was a common name from the actors of The Avengers and that Chris from Stand By You was the Safety Watch Avenger. Joe, who was six, she loved sewing with her grandmother and she made me a superhero cape that is hanging proudly in our office. Though in reality, we all know it is her and those other children who are the true heroes in this story. In the time of the project, over 200 alerts have been triggered by these children, sending over 1,000 calls and messages to over 250 otherwise would-be bystanders who have chosen to be responders for those children that they care and love. Not a single alarm has been escalated by those responders to the police during that time. The solution is the family institution and they just need the tools, the plan and permission to act, which is what our charity provides through the Stand By You Safety Shield. The world has changed a lot since we spoke last, in more ways than one. The tragic murder of Hannah Clark and her children shocked not only the community but the country. And it is with this knowledge that we must act with the urgency, vigour and courage required to chart a new course which shifts conversations to actions. Asking from asking who is responsible to who will be part of the solution and from bystanders to responders. Because we know that connections change lives. Of course, our charity is always open to grants that support our important work. And if the council is inclined to prefer further funding, to provide further funding, we are always keen and ready to go. However, a problem as big as this requires bold action. And to quote the Lord Mayor himself, I stand here before you to make sure the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today. To continue to reach more vulnerable children and families, Stand By You wants to invite the Brisbane City Council to be part of the most significant community programme ever to address domestic violence. Stand By You Foundation wants to work with the council and the Lord Mayor Charitable Trust to establish the Stand By You Domestic Violence Appeal. And like similar appeals, the initiative will allow ratepayers across Brisbane to donate $15 early payment discount to the Lord Mayor Charitable Trust, in which those funds can go directly towards supporting more children and women exposed to domestic violence across Brisbane. If only 10% of ratepayers contributed to this appeal, Stand By You could keep 6,000 children and families safe every year. Brisbane is a smart and connected city and we want to make it a safe city too for children like Joe and Henry. If we want a better tomorrow, we must focus on the children of today. Once again, I thank you for your time and your consideration and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Boyle. I will now call on councillor Howard to respond to you.
Councillor Adams, thank you.
Excuse me, sorry councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair and thank you, Mr Boyle, for joining us today and presenting to council. I know you've been with us before as a guest speaker and it's wonderful to see some of the outcomes of what you have been doing with the Stand By You Foundation and ComSync to support vulnerable children, families and workers in our community. I love the idea that you have a Superman cape hiding there somewhere in your office. I hope that makes you feel as proud as it makes us in supporting you through this project as well. It's certainly a topic that is close to our hearts and that we have spoken about a lot in this place in the last couple of months with the domestic violence strategy, as you mentioned. We are very much focused on making sure we can protect the cities vulnerable and those at risk of domestic violence. We are passionate about that and we want to thank you. And I'd like to thank you on behalf of all of the chamber, your team for dedicating your efforts to such an important cause. It has become a big part of council's mission to partner with organisations and businesses such as yours to raise awareness and support to those who need it most. And we know domestic and family violence unfortunately affects a lot of people, whether directly or otherwise, at some points in our lives. And we have spoken again in chambers, the reality of this situation, which was brought home to us in light of situations earlier in the year in Brisbane, it really rocked our entire Brisbane community as well. Those type of events are undoubtedly the low points when we're looking at how we as leaders can lead our community and grow from these experiences. But as you mentioned, we are a large city council and we're uniquely placed to make sure that we can support a well-connected, safe and supportive community as well. We see the strategy that we've released as groundbreaking for council and it will get operationalised through organisations in the wider community, like opportunities we've had to work with you and your group as well. We will do this through continued support for programmes that bring people together and strengthen those community connections. And of course, as I said, partnering with grassroots organisations and businesses like yours are a great way to develop your ideas because we don't have all the solutions and we don't have the ideas. But you've got this fantastic tangible solution, which has been a great way to make young people feel safe again in their community. I recognise you were part of the Lord Mayor's Global Entrepreneur Programme. I remember reading through your submission when it came through, Chris, and it got very high marks on my half, I can tell you. I'm an ex-teacher, I marked them, you got very high marks. And over the last years, eight years, we've provided more than $275,000 worth of grants to startups across Brisbane to develop products from what you're talking about to digital platforms to lawyers to AI in manufacturing as well. So it's all about reaching national and international markets, but it sounds like you've had an absolutely great start on the ground level here in Brisbane and across the city as well. So we are very proud to support you, congratulate you on what you've done so far and really do like the idea of you talking to the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust. We'll put you in touch with Lady Mayor S and the team over there and see what opportunities we have to make sure we can leverage your determination and drive to make sure that we can continue making these achievements remarkable. So again, thank you so much for taking the time to speak to us today and we'll get in touch and we'll talk about how we can move forward with that as well. Thanks.
Thank you so much, councillor. Thank you all very much for your time, really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Boyle, for joining us.
Thank you.
Councillors, I draw your attention to question time. Are there any questions of Lord Mayor or Chair of any standing committees?
One of order, Chair.
One of order, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, I move a suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion, which is about to be sent to the committee's support team, that Brisbane City Council commits to a freeze on rates increases for the 2020-2021 financial year.
Seconded.
I have an urgency motion moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Cook. It's being distributed now. It is being distributed now. Councillor Cassidy, three minutes to urgency, please.
Thanks very much Chair, this is urgent today because this is the last day in which this council can voice its concern before the Lord Mayor hands down his budget tomorrow, Chair. This is, this is an important issue for the city and it should be the most important issue for this council to offer real and genuine rates relief for people doing it tough. So we have one opportunity now at this council meeting to do that. It's urgent because Brisbane residents and ratepayers are doing it tough at the moment, Chair. And we know that the economic impact of the COVID-19 crisis will be felt most hardly when it comes to the months ahead. So while we're emerging from the health crisis, we're about to walk straight into the economic crisis. So this council needs to urgently support the residents and ratepayers of Brisbane, Chair. Now, it's urgent because we, while Labour councillors have been calling for a rates freeze for months now, during these difficult times, LMP councillors have been silent on this matter. And the Lord Mayor has been so silent that people are sending out search teams to try and find him to see if he's still out there. And he has a view about rates in this city, Chair.
Councillor Cassidy, I feel that your presentations move towards substance rather than urgency. So can you please, can I please draw your comments back to urgency? Councillor Cassidy.
Well Chair, thank you Chair. It is urgent because tomorrow the budget will come down and we as a council who represent the ratepayers and residents of Brisbane need to tell the Lord Mayor through this motion and we need to all stand up and be counted and say that our sole focus at the moment should be on the residents and ratepayers of Brisbane and supporting them as they're doing it tough. Now, there are councils out there who are leading the charge on this and leaving Brisbane for dead. Melbourne City Council, which is a large council, has announced that they will be freezing rates despite having $100 million wiped from their budget bottom line. Moreton Bay Regional Council is giving $200 in rates rebates over two quarters and even Toowoomba Regional Council is offering a $10,500 package.
I appreciate the, what you're saying, however, that would be a material, material that would be considered, I believe, content rather than urgency and I just ask you to come back to urgency, please.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Well, I mean, at least someone's talking about rates, at least someone's talking about rates because the Lord Mayor's gone missing in action, Chair. It's urgent because there is a $3.1 billion budget being handed down tomorrow and this Lord Mayor has gone missing in action. He refuses to talk to, the media refuses to go out and talk to the community about his plan for rates. Well, it is important for us to put a stake in the ground today and say, who supports a rates freeze for the people of Brisbane? This will be the opportunity for every councillor in this place to stand up and lead. And this is, this is a matter, that is, this is fundamentally a matter about the leadership of this Lord Mayor. And Chair, the big question is, will he lead?
I'll now put the resolution on the matter of urgency. All those who support urgency, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Thank you, please lower your hands and all those who do not support urgency, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
No.
The noes, the noes have it.
Division.
Divided by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook, please ring the bells. Thank you, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the result. Oh, sorry, excuse me, excuse me. All those in support of urgency, please say aye and hold your hands up so they may be counted.
Aye.
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 Please lower your hands and all those who did not support urgency, please raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted. Say no, say no.
No.
Please lower your hands. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and twenty against.
Thank you, the noes have it. I will now commence the clock for question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Chair of any standing committees? Councillor Landers.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, following recent debate, can you please update the chamber on how changes made by the state government are affecting the amount of funding local councillors are able to distribute through discretionary funds?
Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair and thank you councillor Landers for the question. I've said it before, I'll say it again, our communities are the lifeblood of our city. The Shriner administration is and always will be committed to supporting our local communities and the invaluable work that they do. Each year, we provide millions of dollars in funding support for our valued community organisations and the work that they do. We are proud to be able to provide this support and it is only because of Lord Mayor Adrian Shriner and his team's 16 years of responsible economic management that we've been able to ensure that we can continue providing this vital support. It is the generosity of our community organisations that makes our city what it is today. It's their passion, their hard work and their dedication that will ensure the Brisbane of tomorrow will be even better than the Brisbane of today. And it's for this reason that the Shriner administration always has and always will return that generosity in any way that we can. Each year, the Lord Mayor's Community Fund provides $75,000 to each and every local councillor across this city to provide essential support to our local communities and the important work that they do. This is the most demanded and most widely used grant here at council and it goes right to the very heart of what we are put here to do as local councillors. The Lord Mayor's Community Fund, in one form or another, has been supporting our local communities for more than a decade. It has provided well over $10 million to support more than 10,000 community organisations, events and initiatives and more than $2 million in this financial year alone. It is through this fund that we have been able to provide support to our seniors, to show them how much we appreciate them and are grateful for their lifelong contribution to making Brisbane a better place. That we've been able to support the wonderfully diverse and colourful culture of our new world city by supporting events like the Brisbane Thai Festival. That we've been able to support those special community events when we come together to share the love and light of Christmas. And it is through this fund that we have celebrated the joy of welcoming with open arms our new Australian citizens as they too are able to share the blessing of what it means to be an Australian and win the lottery of life. Through you, Mr Chair, I cannot tell you how disappointed I was to learn that state labour is stifling council's ability to provide these small but vital grants. Local government laws in Queensland have sadly become a political plaything for a scheming and self-indulgent labour party. Rather than finding new ways for councillors to support their local communities, the state labour government spent more than a year working on these disappointing local government law changes. That's what labour's law changes means to Brisbane. It means that the essential community funds like the Lord Mayor's Community Fund must now be capped at a mere 0.1% of council's revenue from general rates from the previous year. So what does this mean in practice? For Brisbane, that means that council has been forced to slash next year's Lord Mayor's Community Fund to meet this arbitrary amount. Why is it that the labour state government feels the need to target our community groups? Why do they attack our community events and the thousands of families that enjoy them each and every year? There can only be one reason. Labour does not think that our communities are important and they do not trust their own councillors to spend their discretionary funding appropriately. Now, this is a slap in the face for the more than 1,000 community initiatives and events that this fund supports every year. Those opposite have the hide to imply that the Lord Mayor is somehow responsible for changes being made to these funds. Labour's position is made very clear in their own legislation. Their amendments in section 193b of the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012 state, and I quote, "Changes under subsection five now requires that prescribed amounts of those funds in a financial year to be 0.1% of the council's revenue from general rates for the previous year." That is a direct quote. It means that Brisbane residents are significantly worse off in discretionary funds from their local councillor. Council has been assessing the impact of the state labour's restrictions on the support we are permitted to provide the Brisbane community. So, Mr Chair, no matter what tricky game state labour plays, this Shriner administration is committed to finding a way through to support Brisbane communities. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
I've already called you. I've called you twice, councillor Johnston.
Oh, thank you, something was wrong with the sound. Mr Chairman, I seek leave to suspend so much of standing orders to enable to me to move an urgency motion that this council urgently develops an approval process for the Lord Mayor's Community Fund, similar to the Footpath and Parks Trust Fund, that will not require funding cuts as announced by the Lord Mayor.
Seconded.
Are you able to, that?
Yeah, yes, Mr Chairman, it is being sent right now. Oh gosh, this is just a bit easier. There we go.
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
I think that this is something that we should get some legal advice on before debating because I believe that councillor Johnston is deliberately trying to circumvent state government legislation, which is a very serious issue indeed.
I appreciate that, Lord Mayor, I'm going to have to, I'm going to, no, no. The motion before us is about urgency, not about the substance of the matter. If the matter is deemed urgent and we do, and we do debate it today, then I will, then that point of order, Lord Mayor, would be appropriate at that point. Can't hear the Chair. When we move to substance, we'll have to address that question. Councillor Johnston, to urgency, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, you're just cutting in and out there as well, just so you're aware. Mr Chairman, I've moved this urgency motion again today and I moved it two weeks ago because the Lord Mayor and now councillor Howard are blaming the state government for cuts to an essential council funding programme. And I agree with councillor Howard that these are the most critical grants that are available in our community. They are usually fairly small in size and they support a whole range of community activities, events, equipment purchases, projects at sporting clubs, small capital works projects now. They are absolutely and fundamentally critical for our community groups. And it is deceptive, in my view, that this administration refuses to look at establishing a legal policy, a legal policy that would allow an approvals process so the quantum of funding can stay the same and/or possibly be increased. When I started 12 years ago, the amount was $125,000 and that was cut by Campbell Newman. And at the moment, it's at $75,000. We all know how important this is. Clearly, we have a system that would work. It's called the Parks, Footpath and Parks and Footpath Trust Fund. The committees approve expenditure over certain amounts and I'm quite certain that we could both practically, legally and sensibly develop a similar policy that would enable the Lord Mayor's Community Funds to be approved in a very simple way with oversight by the relevant committees.
Councillor Johnston, I appreciate what you're saying, however, I, I do try to, to be even in these things and I just ask that you, your comments have been substance for the last period. Can you please come back to urgency? Councillor Johnston.
It's critically urgent because the Lord Mayor and the chairperson in charge of this area have announced today that they want to cut these funds. There is no reason to cut the funds. We can establish a scheme that will create an approvals process that meets all of our legislative requirements to ensure that this critical funding can continue. It is a, it is a ridiculous thing to blame the state government when the Lord Mayor has clearly announced he's going to cut this funding in the budget tomorrow and that's been confirmed again by councillor Howard. So it's critically urgent that we as a council put in place an approvals process so that this important funding can continue and we can continue to support local community, sporting and a range of groups and activities in our wards. The Lord Mayor does not have to do this. There is an alternative. They say there's no alternatives, there absolutely are.
Your time has expired. Councillors, on the matter of urgency, all those who believe that this resolution is urgent, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you and those against, no, and raise your hands, please.
No.
No.
Oh my goodness!
Noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Strunk and councillor Cook. Please ring the bells.
Did you all just vote yes?
No, you didn't.
Oh.
We lost again, sorry.
Please, please bring everyone back, thank you. All right, now councillors, all those, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe counted. Please lower your hands and those against, please say no and raise your hands and hold the message.
No.
Shame.
Shame.
Shame. Politics, it's all you're interested in.
Please lower your hands. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and twenty against. Sorry, Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and twenty against.
One of order, Chair.
Yeah, this is not working.
Point of order, Chair.
I think the connection's dodgy, I don't know if anyone else is having issues.
There's frozen.
We can't keep doing this. There's no reason to be having a meeting where we can't have a meeting now we don't have a bloody chairperson.
I can't hear councillor Johnson.
Can I propose that councillor Toomey takes over as deputy chair until the next one is resolved?
Seconded.
Why don't we just have a meeting in the council chamber?
Are there any further questions?
Yeah.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, councillor Toomey.
Better get this right.
Point of order.
I can't hear anyone.
I don't know if you can hear me, you just called me, but there's a point of order from councillor Shree, councillor Toomey.
Point of order.
Yeah, that's all. I'm sorry, I can't hear anyone.
Because I'm sure the people of Brisbane aren't watching this, I sure hope they're not anymore. Yes, I'm sure the people of Brisbane aren't watching this. I sure hope they're not anyway.
Councillor Toomey, can I suggest you check F5 on your computer? Sometimes it just fades out.
Yeah, no, it is there. I've got sound back. Thank you, deputy mayor.
Oh.
The Russians are at work.
It's back.
Apologies, councillors.
Oh, this is a joke.
The computer, the internet failed here, and one of the reasons I'm here is to ensure that the internet is as best possibly supported as we can to restore these meetings in paradise. Apologise for that brief lapse. Are there any further questions?
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this week we witnessed the sickening spectacle of Brisbane-based LNP Senator Amanda Stoker comparing Premier Anastasia Palache to the US police officer who knelt on George Floyd's throat. In March 2018, councillor Wines was beaten in the race for senate pre-selection by Amanda Stoker. Do you agree that councillor Wines would have made a far better senator?
Lord Mayor?
It's interesting that we, you know, just one day from the budget, have this kind of shameful and shameless party political question about another level of government, which really shows what councillor Cassidy's true priorities are. He's a party animal first and foremost.
First question was about the state government.
The Labour Party and not the people of Brisbane. He cares about playing silly political games. And this question is just a classic example about that. I'll tell you what I'm focused on. I know that this administration would make, and is making, a better administration than the ragtag, shambolic group of councillors that ran for the Labour Party at the last election. A group that had no policies and no plans, a group that chose to throw mud and personal attack against other councillors, including myself, and came up with nothing positive, and now today continues to play pathetic political games. I am focused on making sure that tomorrow, the budget that we deliver is one that supports our community, one that builds and helps rebuild our community.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
And that is what that budget will do.
Point of order, councillor Strunk?
Yes, could you bring the Lord Mayor back to the question that councillor Cassidy asked, please?
Lord Mayor, I appreciate that because the budget is tomorrow. It is an important topic for today's meeting. However, I must draw you back to the substance of the question.
Well, it's clear what I think, Mr. Chair, and that is I think you would make a much better chairman of this council than any other role that you might seek to serve. And you're doing a fantastic job, particularly with certain councillors who try to make your life hard all the time. So I think, and my vote of confidence is with you, continuing to do the great job that you're doing in chairing this rowdy bunch of councillors, and I encourage you to keep up the good work, councillor Wines.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Are there any further questions?
Point of order, Chair?
Point of order, councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I move suspension of standing orders to allow me to move the following urgency motion, that Brisbane City Council condemns the statements of Senator Amanda Stoker likening the Queensland Premier's response to the COVID health pandemic to the death of George Floyd in the United States. And that's been sent.
All right, that's been... Thank you that it's been distributed. All right, thank you. I have an urgency resolution proposed by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Cook. Councillor Cassidy, to urgency, peer, please, three minutes.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is extremely urgent, because we are all sitting here today as the elected representatives of the people of Brisbane. We are the largest council in Australia and are civic leaders here in Brisbane, and it is incumbent on us to call out this kind of crap when it is spoken.
Look, I appreciate... No, no, councillor Cassidy, I appreciate that this is a really emotive topic and that you're a passionate advocate for these things, but I must insist, can I please just get you to just to bring your language within the acceptable means? You can talk about the topic. You can talk about the topic. I'm not stopping that, but please just limit more careful language. Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of the drubbing that I got three weeks ago, I ask him to withdraw that comment, please, from use in the chamber.
I would ask, yeah, councillor Cassidy, I'll just ask you to withdraw that word and just use a different one that means the same thing, please.
Thanks, Chair. I withdraw. Now, we should all condemn the despicable words that this senator has used. She should be a representative of the people of Queensland. She's based here in Brisbane. We are the Brisbane City Council. It is incumbent on us to set a standard. Brisbane City Council and the city of Brisbane is a city that prides itself on tolerance and inclusiveness, or so it should be, Chair. So this is an opportunity for us to say that when you say things like that and you have a position of power and you're able to have free rein on late-night weirdo talk shows, that you should have a certain amount of decorum, and you shouldn't say things like that, because those sort of words, those sort of words do cause deep hurt and deep concern, and they are, quite frankly, disgusting. That senator has brought shame.
Councillor Cassidy, can I... I just have to... Much of your recent statements were about the content, about the substance, and I must draw you back to urgency, please. Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Chair. It's urgent today because this is the last opportunity we will have as a council for a long time, for a long recess, to call this rot out. And it is incumbent on us, as city leaders, to do that. So I have not seen yet one single LNP councillor make any statements condemning this. We know that Senator Cornman, the leader of the Liberals in the Senate, has had some sort of conversation with her, but she is a Queensland senator that is based here in Brisbane. We have an LNP administration and we have a Lord Mayor I don't think is with us anymore. He seems to have gone. He's gone missing and actually again, Chair. But this is our chance to send a message to Senator Stoker and to the LNP that you made a serious mistake. She needs to be seriously reprimanded, and she actually should resign, Chair. But you cannot, Chair, use the death of someone to score a dumb political point and get away with it.
On our... All those in support of the resolution of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. And all those against, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Oh.
Shame.
Noes have it?
Division.
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 Division called, sorry. Councillor Cook, it was one voice. I can... I know the other person, I did hear a second voice. Councillor Cassidy, division called. Please ring the bells. Please stop the bells and bring everyone back. Again, I will now ask you to vote again. All those in favour of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand and hold it there, so it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Please lower your hands. And all those against, the matter of urgency, please raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
No.
Please lower your hands. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the noes have it. The voting being six in favour, twenty against, and one abstention.
Thank you. The noes have it. I'll now return to question time.
Point of order?
Point of order, councillor Johnston?
Just to check, I can't imagine councillor Sri abstained, and I didn't abstain.
I believe councillor... I was of the view that councillor Sri did not raise his hand at either time.
Yeah, I abstained from that one.
Yes, that's what I... That wasn't my...
I couldn't... Sorry, point of order, Chair. I couldn't hear the initial motion very well, so I just figured I'd abstain.
That's fine. So, yes, that's what I saw as well and what the clerks saw. All right, we'll now restart the clock on question time. Are there any further questions? Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, this week you wrote to Minister for Environment Leanne Enoch regarding the future of Lamb House at Kangaroo Point. Can you elaborate on council's position on this heritage listed property? How is council willing to cooperate with the state government regarding its future?
The deputy mayor, councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Hammond for the question. Brisbane is home to a crate many heritage buildings, everything from California bungalows to the traditional tin and timber. And we have a great wealth of great architecture and history in the suburbs, and over 2,200 heritage listed items, to be exact, in the city plan. This financial year alone, we've added another 48 properties to this register. Forty-eight properties, which otherwise would have been planning loopholes, available to them to be removed. And what Plan Your Brisbane has taught us is that residents wanted to see development that reflected the look and the feel of their neighbourhoods. So this just wasn't about banning townhouses and approving good development, which we're also doing. It was also to do with the protection of our significant buildings across Brisbane as well, and making sure that properties which should be afforded heritage status do receive it and do get protected. We've been adding to the register since we came to administration, and we will continue to do that as we go through amendments to the city plan as well. From enforcement notices on the Broadway Hotel and several TLPIs to protect sites from bad development over our previous term alone, our record is very clear and very outcome-driven. In addition to this, we continue to lobby the state to look after their heritage listed properties, purely because their legislation prevents us from doing so, and it is their responsibility under the planning act to make sure the heritage buildings are protected by the state heritage legislation. In the past, their enthusiasm hasn't quite been there as much as we've had our enthusiasm out there. That's why we're really happy to read in the Brisbane Times last Friday that they are also interested now in protecting and acquiring Lamb's House for the community, which is why, in light of this, that I can update the chamber that the Lord Mayor has written to Minister Enoch as the minister responsible for heritage in Queensland. There have been three requests that have been sought from the state, namely, one, if they like to agree to jointly purchase the property with council, if they would like to agree to jointly refurbish the property with council, and agree to establishing a joint governance arrangement for the management of the site, similar to what we now see at Newstead House. We have asked for the confirmation of their support as soon as possible. I think everybody recognises that Lamb House is too important not to support these measures. It is perched very high on the top of the cliffs at Kangaroo Point with an amazing 180-degree city views. It needs to be saved, and it desperately needs to be fixed and brought back to its former glory. We fully support the stop-work order that is over the building at the moment, and we thank the government for doing that, but that doesn't do anything about bringing it back to that former glory. We believe the only way to properly do this is together. We believe the state is of the same opinion, and that's what the Lord Mayor's letter to Minister Enoch is all about. We really do hope that they come to the table, because I think it will be a great benefit for everybody. At the end of the day, this is about returning Lamb's House to that former glory. It's what council wants. I think it's probably what the state want as well, and it's definitely what the people of Brisbane would love to see. It has stood on this site for over 100 years. It has been around since Brisbane was formally founded. It's been through two world wars, Expo 88, and many other significant events in the city as well. If the walls and the verandas could only talk, I'm imagining it would have a most spectacular story. That is a story that if we bring this building back and give it to the community, can be shown to the people of Brisbane and to the people that visit Brisbane as a significant tourism icon in the heart of the city as well. We'd like to work hard to make sure that Lamb's House, with the joint work with the state government, will be here for 100 more years, and we're going to work hard to make sure that that happens.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Gordon Thompson Oval in Chelma is in terrible shape. And as a result of council's inaction, it was closed to junior sport some six years ago, reducing the amount of sports fields available in the western suburbs. Despite being listed for remediation for many years as one of council's highest priorities, it has not been fixed. Why?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you for the question, councillor Johnson. Obviously, this has been an ongoing matter for a while, according to what you say. I am not familiar with the circumstances in relation to this particular oval, but I'm happy to take that question on notice and advise accordingly.
Further questions? Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, over the weekend, this administration released a sneak peek of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, which will be fast-tracked to deliver jobs for our recovering economy. Can you please update the chamber on this exciting announcement?
Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, thanks for the question, councillor Owen. It was fantastic to share a first look at the future Kangaroo Point Green Bridge with the public on Sunday. As you know, Team Shrinna is determined to make our city cleaner and greener with more travel options to Brisbane residents. Green Bridges achieved this outcome while also driving jobs and supporting economic growth when our city needs it most. That's why we're forging ahead with the Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek Green Bridges to boost the economy while building a sustainable river city. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will actually be one of the city's most-used walking and cycling bridges. It'll cater to 5,400 trips each day. That's more than the go-between Story and Kirilpa Bridges. We expect that three-quarters of these trips will be walkers, and then another quarter will be cyclists. This is expected to increase to more than 6,100 trips each day by 2036. That will mean 84,000 fewer car crossings every year. Just imagine that. It will significantly reduce travel times to and from the CBD for Kangaroo Point residents and those residents in Brisbane's eastern and southeastern suburbs. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will be a world-class gateway to Brisbane city centre and the Kangaroo Point Peninsula. And the artist impressions released over the weekend are based on the current draft reference design, which is about 80% complete. Now, this is for an asymmetric, single-mast cable-stayed bridge. The design of the bridge responds to the spectacular setting of our river city and is striking up against the Kangaroo Point cliffs. It features open views to the cliffs and the Story Bridge, and it takes mark from a few design principles. One, it's sustainable and cost-effective, so the bridge integrates and showcases sustainable design outcomes balanced with whole-of-life costs. Two, it has seamless movement, so it's a gateway to the city centre and Kangaroo Point. The bridge connects directly with inner-city precincts and establishes new desire lines. It's inclusive and safe. It's a convenient, accessible connection with user-friendly experiences. It is safe and comfortable for all bridge users, regardless of age or ability. That's a world-class experience as well. So the bridge and the landings take advantage of the unique settings and easy access to inner-city lifestyle, employment, and living precincts. We've also ensured that the bridge has a distinctive architecture, so the structure itself is elegant and efficient, celebrating Brisbane's identity, its subtropical environment, and our river city image. And it will be culturally rich, so the bridge design, its landing, its connections with the public realm will respond to Brisbane's rich history and the values associated with Brisbane city centre and Kangaroo Point. Now, at its peak, the Green Bridges Programme is estimated to employ more than 500 people in a single year. Currently, approximately 200 people are working on the Green Bridges Programme, including a combination of consultants and full-time council staff. This includes those undertaking initial design work and technical investigations to inform the planning for each of the Green Bridges. Accelerating the delivery of the Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek Green Bridges will ensure that these jobs continue in the local labour market. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will support more than 300 jobs over a two-year period. Now, the location of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge has a long history dating back to the 1860s. A bridge linking the Kangaroo Point Peninsula and CBD was originally proposed in the 1800s, and a design was first developed in 1890. The bridge was never constructed, though, which was likely a result of the severe economic recession of the 1890s and the financial impacts of the 1893 flood event. In 2014, Erbus conducted a study for council that reaffirmed this preferred alignment from Scott Street to Alice Street at the north-east corner of the Brisbane Botanic Gardens. Council's concept design of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge was completed in 2019. And the Green Bridges Programme has been enthusiastically welcomed by Brisbane residents. They've been involved in a four-week citywide community engagement period, which ended late last year. Approximately 60% of respondents indicated that they would use the Kangaroo Point Bridge daily or weekly. And there was strong support for the preferred alignment from Alice Street and Edward Street roundabout to Scott Street with approximately 72% of... to Scott Street, with approximately 72% of respondents supporting this alignment. The bridge will provide better connections between residential, employment, entertainment, and lifestyle precincts. I mean, just imagine on Sunday morning, being able to stroll from the riverside markets in the city over to the Riverlife Precinct at the Kangaroo Point cliffs. Or enjoying a day at Captain Burke Park and then jumping on an e-scooter and gliding across for an afternoon in the city. Or a new opportunity to walk from the Story Bridge Hotel to the Port Office Hotel in a direct line without getting your feet wet. By 2031, an additional 130,000 jobs will be located within a 20-minute walk of Kangaroo Point and 100,000 additional jobs will be within a 20-minute bike ride from east Brisbane. With this connection, residents of Kangaroo Point-
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
Thanks, Chair.
Are there further questions? councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week, Labour suggested you nominate pop-up cycle lanes and safe school travel infrastructure as our COVID works for Queensland projects. Can you tell the chamber which projects you did nominate?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you to councillor Cassidy. Well, I'm sure councillor Cassidy knows everything that happens in the minister's office well before we do. And he would have also known that before he suggested we nominate pop-up bike lanes in the CBD to the state government, that we had indeed already nominated pop-up bike lanes in the CBD to the state government. We know that Uncle Sterling has a very close relationship with your office and continually drip-feeds information well before we get access-
Point of order, Chair.
We know-
So, point of order to councillor Sri.
I'm sorry to be pedantic, but just for the sake of consistency, you've pulled up other councillors for not using elected representatives' formal titles in the past. And I think it's just important that whatever standard you set, you maintain it consistently.
I appreciate the point you're making. Lord Mayor, can you please refer to Minister Hinchcliffe as such in the future?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Minister Hinchcliffe is who I'm referring to. I have affectionately labelled him as Uncle Sterling in the past because of the very cosy and close relationship that he has with the leader of the opposition. I don't shy away from that. I will call him officially Minister Hinchcliffe. But certainly that nickname is very appropriate. The reality here is that-
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Sri?
I just want to be clear that you're allowing us to use nicknames for elected representatives because I've got plenty and I would love to unleash them.
Now, you don't need to make threats either. Now, what I've said is I've directed that formal titles be used and the Lord Mayor has said, has used the formal title and said into the future that he will be. Lord Mayor?
Thank you. As I was referring to, before councillor Cassidy conveniently went out to the media and said that we should nominate pop-up bike lanes in the CBD to the state government, we had already nominated pop-up bike lanes in the CBD to the state government. So I smell a rat here and it is the same type of rat which sees Labour repeatedly get access to information in the local government portfolio before we do.
What point of order to you, councillor Cassidy?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just on relevance, I mean, it's a very simple question. Which projects were nominated? If the Lord Mayor could answer that?
I believe he is answering that. Lord Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chair. I am nominating, I am answering those nominated projects. The first of which is pop-up bike lanes in the CBD. Because this is something that we have been quietly but diligently exploring for quite some time now. And something that now we have submitted to the state government for consideration as part of their $5 million allocation. Now, this is the same $5 million allocation which sees Brisbane residents short-changed in comparison to other parts of the state. This is the same $5 million which, in say, a place like Townsville, which has a Labor Lord Mayor, got $13 million. For a population, I think of about 190,000 people, they got $13 million from the state government. Yet the 1.2 million people in Brisbane got $5 million from the state government. So this is the same allocation that I'm referring to here that has been very unfairly granted by this state government, very cynically granted by this state government. But hey, we're moving on and we're making-
The Lord Mayor, there's a point of order. Point of order, councillor Johnston?
I'm very interested in the answer. Just on relevance, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know the projects that we're funding. I've heard one, pop-up bikeways, but are there any others?
Thank you. The Lord Mayor is answering the question and providing that information. He also has a substantial amount of his answer to go. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is the pot of money that, you know, Brisbane was short-changed with. But we are moving forward to make sure that that funding is allocated to projects that can be geared up quickly. And with the support of the state government, we will be able to see, as the first cab off the rank, pop-up bike lanes implemented in the Brisbane CBD. Now, this will obviously be stage one of what down the track will become a larger and wider process. But certainly to get some lanes down in the CBD to take advantage of the increase in cycling that we've seen in recent times is a good policy outcome and one that would be supported, I think, across both sides of the political fence, or in fact, all three sides of the political fence. And something that I think we can get a good outcome for. The other thing is, this is an opportunity to make sure that we have great access to our new Kangaroo Point Bridge that we're fast-tracking.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the question was about the projects that are being funded. And the Lord Mayor has mentioned one, but I'm extremely interested in how this money is being spent. And I appreciate he may not know or may have to take it on notice, but I'd really like to know.
Thank you for your point of order. I am, I've been listening to the Lord Mayor's answer. He's provided detail about one and I believe he just said Kangaroo Point Bridge, but I'd only merely begun that point, so I'll allow him-
Yeah, thank you. Look, this is all semantics because we know that councillor Cassidy actually knows the answer to this question. But look, if you want to ask the question, that's fine.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Point of order, councillor Johnston?
Mr. Chairman, the meeting's local law require the questions to be answered, not debated. And I don't know the answers and I'm very interested in how this money is being spent and I would very much like to know the projects being-
Thank you. Thank you. I've drawn the Lord Mayor back to the question I've responded to. Three points of order from you on this. I would ask that, Lord Mayor, yeah, I believe the Lord Mayor is answering the question. I've given that same response three times and I would ask that you resist the urge to make the same point of order again, please. Lord Mayor?
Okay, so obviously the $5 million pales into its significance when it's compared to what other councils with much smaller populations have received. But we're going to put it to the best use possible by bringing forward projects that can be geared up really quickly. So the first of those projects is the pop-up bike lanes in the CBD. The second of those projects will be fast-tracking the next stage of the North Brisbane Bike Way.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired? Further questions? councillor Davis?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor-
Point of order, councillor Johnston?
Mr. Chairman, answers to the questions have five minutes to answer. And it's clear that the Lord Mayor there did have the answer to that question but chose to speak about lots of other issues.
What's the point of order?
On relevance, Mr. Chairman, I have concerns that the rules were not followed and that answer was not provided. And that was just a clear breach of the meeting's local law.
I don't agree with your interpretation. councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor McLaughlin. Councillor McLaughlin, with the end of the financial year nearly upon us, can you please inform the chamber on what the Infrastructure Division has achieved during this very difficult period?
Councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question, councillor Davis. While the last few months of this financial year have thrown up many challenges to everyone in the business of infrastructure construction, our workforce and contractors have met those challenges and have got on with the job of project delivery. Despite recent events, delivery work over the past 12 months has been guided by decisions and budget allocations that follow council's roadmap for planning the transport network, always evolving to meet the needs of a constantly growing city. The roadmap to which I refer is the Transport Plan for Brisbane strategic directions. This, Mr. Chair, is a great body of work that was overseen by my predecessor in this role, councillor Amanda Cooper, who worked with an eminent group of industry experts and the community to create the Transport Plan for Brisbane and followed then by its implementation plan released in October 2018. Much of the work undertaken by the Infrastructure Division over the past 12 months and for the next 12 months and beyond is the delivery of and on the Transport Plan for Brisbane blueprint and implementing the Move Safe Brisbane Report, which followed in its wake. Mr. Chair, looking specifically at Programme Two outcomes over the past 11 months and two weeks of the current financial year, there are numerous achievements I'd like to highlight. We saw the completion of Wynham Road Stage One in April, which widened Litten Road to improve its capacity and to reduce travel times. The Murphy and Ellison Road upgrade in Gbung was delivered, which converted a congestion and accident-prone roundabout to a fully signalised intersection. In collaboration with the Port of Brisbane, we improved the road infrastructure in Pinkham Bar to support the new international cruise terminal. The City Botanic Gardens River Hub was constructed, offering even greater opportunity to enjoy one of our city's great natural assets. And won't that be fantastic, linking up with the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge in future years? Community consultation for the North West Transport Network was undertaken, involving 19 community sessions. This helped to inform the business case currently underway to provide to the federal government. Mr. Chair, many of a wide range of smaller-scale infrastructure works in the suburbs, just as important as these significant projects, have been delivered by implementing the Transport Plan for Brisbane. They make huge differences in the daily lives of local residents, communities, schools, and businesses. To name just a few highlights in the 2019-20 financial year, 29 local access network improvement projects progressed to construction. These are typically minor intersection works such as upgrades to traffic islands, pedestrian crossings, and signage. We completed a number of important intersection upgrades, including those at Chatsworth, Boundary and Samuel's Roads in Cooperoo, Ramont and Grange Roads in Grange, Azalea Street and Eugenia Street in Anala, and Kestles Road and McGregor Street in McGregor. The Waterworks Road upgrade in Ashgrove was also completed in December, which widened some sections of the road and installed dedicated turning lanes to decrease congestion. We worked, Mr. Chair, with 198 schools to complete traffic management plans, delivering enhanced school zones at seven locations and nine safe school travel infrastructure projects, supporting safer active travel to schools for Brisbane families. A total of 75 curb and channel improvements and 431 roads resurfacing projects were delivered this financial year, creating smoother suburban streets. Another 20 LED slowdown signs were erected across the city, as well as 20 wildlife awareness monitors. The initiative is important for reducing the potential for accidents on suburban streets. The popular SAM signs programme continued with the installation of 28 new Sams and the rotation of 516 Sams. The Valentine's Day Eka and Halloween Sams were also added into council suite of SAM designs. And this initiative continued to deliver results with speeding vehicles slowing down by eight kilometres per hour on average. Mr. Chair, 2019-20 has undoubtedly been busy with the completion of several key infrastructure upgrades and the forward planning for more in the future. My thanks once again to my predecessor, Amanda Cooper, for her role in planning a successful Programme Two in this financial year. And I know that is the MP for Asplia after October. She'll certainly be getting things done for her electorate and the state. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions? councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the LMP has form for having transport rolling stock built overseas without meeting the requirements to be compliant with the Disability Discrimination Act as evidenced by the Newman Government's NGR trains fiasco. Can you detail which groups representing people with a disability have been consulted as part of the design process for the new Metro buses?
Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, thanks councillor Cassidy for the question. I can assure you that council and Translink have partnered on design of the vehicle. We have a working group that is overseeing the detailed design of the vehicle at the moment through the Metro project team that has involved consultation with disability groups. And of course, we will be consulting with them when we bring the pilot vehicle out here midway through next year. The reality is that this vehicle, right from the very beginning, right from conception of this vehicle, is designed to have a full low-floor access so that people who have a disability can move about the entire cabin. The reality is that we've learnt the lessons watching, I think, from a distance what happened with the next-generation rolling stock, which were designed and procured long before the Metro project existed. They were a Bombardier product, designed overseas, built in India and brought here. They had to have significant modifications made to ensure that people in a wheelchair that had a disability could access their toilet cabin. Obviously, we don't have the same issues with the Brisbane Metro vehicles because they don't have an onboard toilet. But certainly, certainly, we want to make sure that we are reaching out to all the stakeholder groups in Brisbane when it comes to those who have a disability, ensuring that these vehicles maintain access for people of all ages, all abilities. Because we know that these vehicles will not just be part of a Metro project that ends in 2023. They will be here for the long haul. And we know that with the future capacity that we want to bring onto the network with these vehicles, the people will be riding around in them for a very long time. So they need to be a product that is future-proof. And the design team in Brisbane Metro is well aware of that. We are all well aware of that. And you will not find a team that is more committed to access and inclusion than Team Shrinna. This is a team that has the runs on the board when it comes to access inclusion, whether that's in city planning, through our universal housing scheme, whether it's through design of our buses and our future fleet, our City Cats, of course, the Bus Stop Accessibility Improvement Programme, the Bus Stop Improvement Programme. This is an administration, absolutely, that is committed to ensuring that all people can access our city regardless of whether they have a physical or a mental incapacity. And certainly, we're taking that on board in the design of our signature project, the Brisbane Metro.
Further questions? councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee, councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, with further COVID restrictions easing on Queenslanders, can you please update residents on the reopening of council's tip shops to the public?
Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank councillor Toomey for the question. As most of the councillors on the chamber will know, council's south side and north side tip shops, which are at Acacia Ridge in Gbung, reopened on Saturday, the 13th of June, after being closed as a result of social distancing restrictions in place due to the global coronavirus pandemic. The reopening weekend was a huge success with more than 1,000 transactions and more than $20,000 in takings taken in to support the Endeavour Foundation as well as many products safe from landfill. So the turnout at the weekend reopening is further proof of how valuable our tip shops are to the Brisbane community. So to ensure tip shops could reopen safely, signage was installed at both sites to remind customers to maintain social distancing while browsing, to ensure the safety of staff and residents, and to abide by state government regulations, only 20 people were admitted inside the tip shop at any one time. And of course, hand sanitizer was also available, as well as additional staff on hand to help monitor the maximum capacity in the store. So more than 3,600 tonnes of items have been diverted from landfill and sold in these shops. The first one recently celebrating a decade since opening at Acacia Ridge in May in 2010. The two tip shops have attracted more than 487,000 bargain hunters- The two tip shops have attracted more than 487,000 bargain hunters since they opened. And for the new councillors who don't know, this Endeavour Foundation operate both tips on behalf of council. And the shops are open every weekend from 8am to 4pm. Brisbane residents can donate clean items in working order via any one of our four council resource recovery centres. That's at Chandler, Fernigrove, Nudgee and Willawong. The centres then donate the items to the tip shop for reuse and the resource recovery centres are open 365 days a year. Some of the quite unusual items that they've had recently turn up at the tip shop is a Beal semi-grand piano. And there was one, there was a 780mm tall bikini model statue. I haven't been informed if that's still available or not. So if anyone's interested in a bikini model statue, she might still be out there at the tip shop. The Endeavour Foundation, they use the funds to support and provide opportunities for people with an intellectual disability so they can live their best lives at home, work and in the community. And they also use the funds to invest in purpose-built accessible housing for people with a disability. So obviously during this coronavirus time where everyone's been at home, there's a lot of people been doing some spring cleaning. They've taken all their unwanted goods across to the Resource Recovery Centre, who then have taken it into the tip shops. And then now people are purchasing it and that funds are then going on to help other people. So what they say about one man's treasure is another man's trash, one man's trash is another one's treasure is very true. And in this case, our tip shops provide a win-win-win for everybody. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, over the weekend, the Lord Mayor tweeted out designs for the new footbridge at Kangaroo Point. And the council spokesman or the administration spokesperson told the media the bridge would cost $190 million. How do you intend to stick to the $550 million budget for five bridges if one costs $190 million? And is that why the Lord Mayor went into hiding?
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks very much councillor Cassidy for the question. The reality is that when the Lord Mayor announced the Green Bridges Programme, he announced the council would be making a $550 million contribution to the programme. It was capped at that. So that's what we will be spending on the Green Bridges Programme. And we know that to deliver the five bridges in the programme, we will need state and federal contributions for those projects. We have said that from the very beginning. You can go back and you can read the Lord Mayor's statements at the time that he announced the Green Bridges Programme. It was the first thing that he announced on the day that he became the Lord Mayor. It was a great day. I remember it well. I was smiling from ear to ear. Because I know, like all of my colleagues know, that this programme is a fantastic way for us to change the way that people move around our city. It means getting away from those car-centric projects that Campbell Newman and Graham Quirk continued and getting on board with public transport, active transport, changing the journeys that people can take in our city. And we're really excited about the Kangaroo Point Bridge that we released the vision of on the weekend. Those designs, I think you'll agree councillor Cassidy, are indeed quite striking, quite iconic. Of course, when you put these things out there, you know, art is subjective, bridge design is subjective. And you ask five different architects their opinion on whether a bridge looks good, you'll get five different answers. But, you know, we put it out there, we put it up on multiple social media platforms. And so far, I can see we've received nothing but praise for the iconic design of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. Now, does it cost a lot of money? $190 million, that is a significant investment. That is a significant investment. You will not find anyone in the team that doesn't go, wow, that's a lot of money to spend on a bridge. But this bridge has been talked about since the 1860s. It's a bridge that has been on multiple level of governments' wish lists for a very long time. And it will be this administration, this Lord Mayor, who will actually deliver it. So yes, council, it is up for the full cost of that bridge. We are committed to delivering that one. It's because we need to fast-track those bridges to create the jobs that Brisbane needs right now. We know that we have 135,000 people out of work in this city. And if we were relying councillor Cassidy on the Australian Labor Party through the $5 million that we received from Works to Queensland to pick up the tab and create jobs in Brisbane, then we know we will be waiting a very long time indeed. So the Lord Mayor is committed to fast-tracking that project, to getting that project happening. We brought forward the delivery date of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. It was originally slated to be completed in 2025. We brought that forward to 2023. We brought that forward for a very good reason. And not only because we can create those active transport opportunities here in Brisbane, but because, as the Lord Mayor announced with the CBD cycling opportunities that will be announced tomorrow in the budget, supported by the state government programme, we have a lot to connect into. So that bridge, as I said, will come off Scott Street at Kangaroo Point. It will connect in with the City Botanic Gardens and it will provide an opportunity for walkers and cyclists, particularly those who live in the Kangaroo Point Peninsula and councillor Shree's Ward, to move into an important economic and cultural precinct for our city. A lot of people are under the false impression, I'll say, that because Kangaroo Point is so close to the CBD, that it's really easy to move in and around Kangaroo Point for a large number of people. And the reality is actually anything but. There are tens of thousands of people that live in Kangaroo Point who don't have easy access to public transport. So they still have to use cars to get around our city. Given how close they are to the CBD, that just shouldn't be the case. And that's why the Kangaroo Point will allow us to take 83,000 cars off Brisbane streets every year, connecting that precinct that despite the fact that it seems like it would have good public transport, actually doesn't have a train. It has relatively few buses. It does have obviously the Story Bridge, but that doesn't create a direct route into the CBD. And often times, it's difficult for people to get to the access points to get onto the Story Bridge. Or to get around the other way, they've got to go via the Kangaroo Point Bike Way all the way around to the Goodwill Bridge and take that detour in via QT, which might not necessarily be close to the destination that they're trying to get to in the CBD. So the Kangaroo Point Bridge will be a game-changer. As I said before, this will create a whole new way to move around.
Councillor Murphy, your time. Councillors, that concludes question time. Councillors, I draw your attention to the consideration of committee reports. The Establishment and Coordination Committee report for Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 8th of June 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
Been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the reporter, Establishment Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 8th of June 2020 be adopted. Ethering debate for Lord Mayor.
Ah, yes.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Ah, yes. I seek the following further information about Item C, which is the community grants policy. The ENC report on page 10 in the draft resolution states that the Establishment and Coordination Committee and the Chief Executive Officer will be approving all grants. In the policy, which is clause C, attachment B, under applicability, this policy, it says, applies to all council grants and councillor discretionary funds. I'm just seeking to clarify whether or not the LMCF is now going to be administered by ENC and/or the Chief Executive Officer, as stated in the policy.
Thank you. The Lord Mayor, I'm sure, has heard that question and I'm sure he'll answer if time permits. For Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move into the formal items, I just wanted to cover a couple of matters that came up in question time. The first was the stunt motion from the Labor Party, the Labor Opposition, which literally was an insult to everyone's intelligence that the day before the budget, they can move a motion which will have any kind of effect on the budget. I can tell you councillor Cassidy, the budget went to print last week. So any idea that you could change the budget a little, literally, within 24 hours? Within 24 hours is just, it just goes to show this was nothing more than a political stunt. And it is part of the Labor Party's desperate searching around in the dark to try and find some relevance after their election drubbing. But the best way to be relevant, councillor Cassidy, is to actually have some vision for the city and some positive ideas, rather than these type of stunts which make no difference to anyone. I have said consistently when I'm asked about this question, when I'm asked about the budget or when I'm asked about rates, is that we will have that at the forefront of our mind throughout the budget process. And I've said that, I've been saying that now for months, that the needs, that the recovery of the community of residents and businesses is at the forefront of our minds as we went through the budget process. And so I say that again today. As we developed what was the most difficult budget I have seen in almost 15 years in council and probably the most difficult economic circumstances that we have seen as a city council ever, since the, certainly since the council was established in 1925. That was at the forefront of our mind, those difficult circumstances and making sure that...
Please continue, Lord Mayor.
And making sure that we do what we can to support the community and business and relieve the pressure on them at the moment that is coming from all angles. So I simply repeat that again today. We didn't need a motion, a political stunt motion from councillor Cassidy to have that at the forefront of our minds. It was already at the forefront of our minds. But councillor Cassidy, one more sleep to go. There's just one more sleep until all of those, I guess, questions that you have are answered. And one more sleep until we can get on with the budget for the new financial year, which supports the recovery of our city. On another issue that came up in question time this afternoon, the issue of the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. Now, the very nature of the Lord Mayor's Community Fund has from day one been a discretionary fund. Now, you can dress it up whichever way you like, councillor Johnston, but it will be a discretionary fund if you give out grants in this manner.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, I appreciate the Lord Mayor's speaking directly to me, but I know you think that's a big no-no and presume you would ask him to speak through you to the Chair as you have in previous weeks.
All councillors will maintain, talking about other councillors in the third person and direct all comments to and through the Chair.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Another pointless point of order from councillor Johnston, which wastes the time of every councillor.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Order councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, the Lord Mayor is being extremely disrespectful of me and of your rulings. This is not my ruling, it's yours. And I would ask that you ensure it's implemented in a fair way to all councillors.
I believe that I put a great deal of effort into being fair to all councillors and applying the rules evenly. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Look, I also agree that you are extremely fair and extremely tolerant of interruptions, misuse of point of order for debate and for seeking relevance. And I, as I said earlier, I encourage you to keep up the good work in very difficult circumstances with certain councillors in this place. But back to the matter that I was talking about, Lord Mayor's Community Fund by its nature was always a discretionary fund. And the legislation introduced by the state government says it is perfectly fine to have discretionary funds. There must be various levels of oversight with those discretionary funds. There must be approval processes put in place with those discretionary funds. But there should be a strict cap or limit on those funds. So the state government is simply saying, yes, it's okay to have discretionary funds. And the Lord Mayor's Community Fund is by any measure a discretionary fund. But there should be a limit on the amount of funding. So what councillor Johnston has been suggesting through you, Mr Chair, is that we circumvent state government legislation to allocate more funding for a discretionary fund by dressing it up somehow as though it's not discretionary. Now, there is a very big difference between the Suburban Enhancement Fund and the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. The Suburban Enhancement Fund is effectively about councillors doing capital works in most cases to improve community and council assets, mainly council assets. The funding in that Suburban Enhancement Fund, in many ways, is capital funding. And it improves things like parks and footpaths and a range of other important community infrastructure assets. The Lord Mayor's Community Fund, in the main, is giving grants to third parties, giving funding to third parties. And it has always been done with a significant involvement from the local councillor. That was always the attraction of the fund. It gave local councillors the ability to work with their communities, to provide support where it's needed the most. And that, by its nature, is a discretionary fund. So yes, there will be changes to the way this operates. There is a cap that's put on. But we cannot pretend that this is anything other than a discretionary fund. It's giving out significant grants and funding to third parties. And that is, we have had all the legal advice, very different to the Suburban Enhancement Fund. It is giving grants to third parties. It is a discretionary fund. And I certainly would counsel against any attempts to try and circumvent the legislation from the state government. By all means, you can disagree with that legislation. We often have disagreements about state government legislation. And that is councillor Johnston's right to disagree with. That is other councillors' right to disagree with. But this law is in place and we are required to comply with it. And that is what we will be doing. So moving on, Mr Chair. Tomorrow marks Red Apple Day, which is an Awareness Day in Bowel Cancer Awareness Month. Bowel cancer claims the lives of 103 Australians every week. But it is also, the good news is, it is also one of the most treatable types of cancer if found early. The apple is symbolic of the charity's message, which is bowel cancer is treatable and beatable if detected early. To show our support, council will be tonight lighting up the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridges in red and green. This week also marks Men's Health Awareness Week. And the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridges and Redcliffe Place sculptures will be lit in blue to show our support. This light-up has been organised by the Prostate Cancer Foundation of Australia, who are dedicated to reducing the impact of prostate cancer on Australian men, their partners, their families, through awareness and understanding. Item A before us, Mr Chair, is the submission relating to the Cooperative Research Centre for Water-Sensitive Cities. This is an ongoing arrangement which we have proposed to be renewed. The CRC brings together world-renowned experts and industry leaders from various disciplines to transform cities through water sustainability in both Australia and overseas. The participation agreement that is being debated today implements an extension of the partnership agreement. The agreement is in the same format and under the same conditions as the previous agreement. The proposed new agreement will continue until June 2021 at a cost of $60,000 in cash and $30,000 in in-kind contribution from council. Payment of $30,000 has already been made under the previous agreement. Item B is the Significant Contracting Plan for the Dry Hire of Specialist Mobile Plant Aquaries and Asphalt Plants. Obviously, as we gear up and continue to do works across our infrastructure asset base, we have a need to hire equipment from time to time. Obviously, the dry hire is the hire of the equipment itself without staff. We use our own staff to operate that equipment. But there is definitely a need to have the ability to hire equipment on an as-need basis. We do obviously have our own equipment for many different types of work, but... We do obviously have our own equipment for many different types of work, but the level of work is variable and can gear up in certain years and drop off in other years.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. An extension of time made by Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favour of an extension of time, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
If it goes against, no, and raise your hands. Thank you, the ayes have it. Lord Mayor, ten minutes.
Thank you. As I was mentioning, the the need to hire equipment is there, given the cyclical nature of some of the work that we do and having the ability to hire equipment on an as-need basis is important. The other advantage of this is that we can get access to quite a modern fleet of equipment, equipment which is less than five years old, which adds some reliability and also reduces our ongoing issues when it comes to maintenance. There's minimal downtime as it is the owner's responsibility to keep the plant operating and maintained. And so there's no capital outlay as required as well when it comes to the dry hire of this equipment. So obviously, you know, ongoing, ongoing arrangement that we'd like to see extended and renewed through that process. Item C is the amendment of the corporate rule AP one one nine, Community Grants Policy. This formal submission includes updates to council's Grants Policy Guideline, AP one one nine, the council has been required to make as a result of local government legislative arrangements the state government put through last year. These local government legislative amendments require council to provide more detailed guidelines for grants policies and in particular, more detailed guidelines to reflect the new requirements for discretionary funds. Therefore, as part of council's new requirements outlined by this recent change to local government legislation, this submission includes updates to council's Grants Policy to include the new reporting requirements for councillors allocating discretionary funds. A councillor must within seven business days of making an allocation, provide the CEO with a notice about the allocation and details of that allocation. Listing of the approved applications must then be published on council's website within another seven days. The definition of a community organisation has been aligned or updated to align with the definitions listed in the City of Brisbane Act to capture not-for-profit organisations and other organisations that carry out activity for a public purpose. The guidelines have also been updated to outline further detail regarding the grant assessment process and accountability measures that council has in place to provide further clarity to community organisations and councillors about how decisions to allocate discretionary funds are made. This also updates the conflict of interest procedures. Councillors will be required to seek CEO direction and approval prior to allocation of discretionary funds if a councillor has an actual or perceived conflict of interest. So the submission also aligns the terminology to legislative requirements as set out in the City of Brisbane Act and also the regulation. And the updates and changes include included within item C are necessary to enable the council to update the guidelines for the Lord Mayor's Community Fund AP one twenty. So there's a separate set of guidelines for the Lord Mayor's Community Fund AP one twenty and all councillors will be informed about those updates once the process is finalised. So grant funding and discretionary funding are two separate things and they have different delegations. So the grants are as per the resolution before us.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
I am listening closely to the Lord Mayor, but on the material that we've been given in attachment C, sorry clause C, attachment B, under applicability, it's very clearly saying...
Point of order.
One one nine is that this policy, one one nine, applies to council...
Councillor Johnston, what's the point of order?
That, well, there's a problem whether or not this is legal. AP one nine nine, which we're being asked to approve here and what the Lord Mayor's saying, it's different. This says councillor discretionary funds are covered under one one nine and under this resolution today, it says the power to approve those grants is being given to E and C and the and all the CEO. So the Lord Mayor is seeming to say that it's not, but that's what the documents have we've got in front of us are saying today. So I don't understand why this one one nine applies to discretionary funds and why the delegation is...
All right, no, no, I'm going to stop you now. I think we need to, okay, what I'm going to say is that the Lord Mayor's, the advice the Lord Mayor's provided is different to what you've said.
It is.
No, no, please don't. Are you with me? I'm giving a response. I am going to ask for an opinion.
Excellent.
However, I will allow the Lord Mayor to continue his presentation. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Mister Chair, I was just explaining that there's a difference between grant funding and councillor discretionary funding. This submission in the in the main applies to grant funding, but also touches on the matter of discretionary funding, but it is also important to enable AP one twenty, which is the next policy that I referred to before, which relates specifically to the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. So this policy covers all grants. It also refers to certain guidelines for discretionary funds and this is the enabling submission for us to update AP one twenty next, which is the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. So this has a wider remit than just the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. This covers all grants and the procedures for all grants, but it does also allow us to update the procedures for AP one twenty, the Lord Mayor's Community Fund guidelines, which will be updated, assuming this submission is approved through council. And then we'll get in touch with councillors as soon as possible about that updated policy to make sure that everyone is aware of how it works, to aware of your obligations, aware of the legislative requirements when it comes to the use of that discretionary funding through the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. So this has been very carefully checked by Brisbane City Legal Practice and our Chief Legal Officer. This is very much fully compliant with the legislation and the regulation. And this is very much something that we do need to do to make sure that there are appropriate processes in place so that we are beyond reproach when it comes to the approval of grants and also discretionary funds.
Further speakers?
Just, sorry.
Oh, sorry, excuse me, excuse me, Lord Mayor, please continue, that was my error.
Okay. Item D, I'll just touch on briefly, I know I've taken a little bit more time than I would have liked. Item D relates to the Audit Committee and the Audit Committee Charter. The Audit Committee reviews council's internal audit report on operation risk and control measures throughout the year. Council works with the Audit Committee and the Queensland Audit Office to ensure we meet all of our audit requirements. The establishment of an audit committee is a requirement of the City of Brisbane Regulation. Council has an independent audit committee, which has been in place for at least twenty five years since it became a requirement first. The Audit Committee is independent of the business of council so that we're not talking about council officers assessing council officers here. This is an independent committee and the scope is outlined in the City of Brisbane Council Audit Committee Charter. The membership of the committee pursuant to section two hundred of the regulation sets the Audit Committee for the next four years to the thirtieth of June twenty twenty four. The following members will be appointed, the Chair, Mister Paul Shipley, independent Member, Mister Mitchell Petrie, independent Member, Miss Gail Jukes, and independent Member, Miss Catherine de Ruta de Wild. These are all very experienced people and have the suitable qualifications and expertise required to undertake the work and objectives of the committee. Both the Chair and Mister Petrie have previously demonstrated their capacity and valuable service to the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee Charter sets out the objectives, the authority, responsibilities, composition and tenure, as well as reporting and administrative requirements. So I'll submit that for the consideration of all councillors. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Further debate councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, I rise to speak on all of these items. Just ask item D be taken, cereatum for voting, please.
Item D, cereatum for voting.
D, yes. I must start on item C, the Community Grants Policy, AP one one nine, and there does seem to be some confusion even from what the Lord Mayor has just said and the advice that I've received from the CEO about this policy. But essentially, this AP one one nine is before us as a result of recommendations by the CCC and changes to the City of Brisbane Regulation twenty twelve. Council is obviously legally required to make changes to the grants policy, but what we saw and shew earlier in this meeting and and here, what's before us today is that the item fails to tackle the changes to the AP one twenty that would be required to ensure that its function can remain and we could continue to support a community groups through the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. I think the Lord Mayor is being mischievous and is misleading the people of Brisbane when he says that changes couldn't be made to ensure that a higher level of funding could be available for community organisations. So what we should be doing is reviewing and approving a new policy, which would be AP one twenty in line with this one, to ensure that the Lord Mayor's Community Fund could remain unchanged in in its in its level of funding, but fundamentally changed in the way in which it is approved. And that is something that could happen, something that council was required to do last year with the delegations for the Suburban Enhancement Fund. They were at the discretion of councillors and granted that approving funding for capital projects is different to approving funding for community groups, the precedent is there and a delegation to a committee, whether it's a Lifestyle and Community Services Committee or the Establishment Coordination Committee, which would not be ideal, or in fact, the CEO could have been made and those grants and allocations could have been done on the recommendation of a local councillor, but with appropriate oversight of of a group of councillors or the CEO independent of that councillor would ensure that we would admit the requirements under the regulation. So I don't for one minute take the Lord Mayor at his word that this is the only option for this council. So the the Lord Mayor Chair needs to stop blaming the state government for this and bring an amendment to the Lord Mayor's Community Fund policy. We have that template, as we said, that's something along the lines of the Suburban Enhancement Fund where those projects are approved at a committee level. So the simple fix, instead of the one councillor approving the grant, the council will make a recommendation. It's not very hard, Chair, so I'm not sure why the Lord Mayor is arguing so forcefully against this. One can only assume that in the lead up to a state election, this Lord Mayor wants to try and score some political points against state Labor MPs by slashing the level of community funding, Chair, and then blaming someone else for it. But we know that this this is on his head, Chair. The Lord Mayor's Community Fund was supported over eleven hundred projects last year, eleven hundred and eighty projects across Brisbane. And by failing to bring a new policy here today, Lord Mayor is admitting through his actions and his words that he is cutting funding and this LMP administration is cutting funding for vital community projects. Projects like these, Chair, in the Brackenridge Ward, projects like the launch of a compost hub at the Fitzgibbon Community Centre or a new ride on moor for the Aspley Memorial Club or upgrades to the toilets at the Ball Hills Memorial Hall or an electric timing system for the Brackenridge Swimming Club will all be put at jeopardy. In the Doboy Ward, Chair, junior bikes, roller trainers and travel boxes for the Balmoral Cycling Club would be slashed. Christmas carols at the Bayside Unitings Church wouldn't go ahead. New signage for the the Carina Senior Citizens Club is at jeopardy. In your ward, Chair, the three sun safe grandstands at Downey Park Netball Association would be in jeopardy. The Ashgrove Gap carols by candlelight could face the chopping block and an exercise programme for over sixties at the Mitchie Day Club could be put at risk. In the Cullunvale Ward, Chair, a new printer for the Cullunvale National Seniors, a wireless timing system for the Rockleigh Swim Team, performers for the twenty nineteen Australia India Day celebrations might not be able to proceed. In the Cooperoo Ward, Chair, a new gas hot water system for the Junior Clubhouse at the Annley Recreation Club, replacement of lights at the Brisbane Metro Touch Association and a new computer for the Cooperoo RSL may not be a reality because of the decision that this Lord Mayor is taking today. In the Marchant Ward, Chair, a first aid defibrillator for the Samaritans Kedram Parish, the first aid training at the woodworking and woodworking classes for the Stafford and Community Men's Shed and repairs to the Memorial Four Court at the Gibang Zulmia Ball Hills Aspley RSL Branch, which is now my ward, may never proceed again because of this Lord Mayor's decision. In the Northgate Ward, new signage for the Banyo Kindy Painting for the Northern Sober's Bowls Club Clubhouse and buying toiletries for people in need, a project run by the Wavell Slimmers Club is all at jeopardy because of this Lord Mayor's decision, Chair. I mean, in in my ward, just a very recent one we did was allocate funding to Sandbag for their their free and confidential phone service, which is particularly at the moment through COVID, helping people who are particularly vulnerable in our community, having someone to reach out to and to talk to on the other end of the line. So this Lord Mayor had an opportunity for weeks now to devise a system, more than that, Chair, actually, he's had months and months, to devise a system in which the level of funding could remain or in fact could increase because that's what needs to happen when we really think about it. These vital projects are often squeezed and only partially funded because there's not enough funding to go around. The Lord Mayor had a choice to make and and it was a very simple choice. He could either act on one hand, Chair, for the residents of Brisbane and and to devise a very simple solution to ensure that this community funding could remain at its current level and that councillors could make a recommendation to a committee or to the CEO for this funding to be allocated. It was one choice he had to support the community. And the other choice he had, Chair, was to score a couple of political points.
One point of order to you councillor Adams.
Can I just question the relevance of councillor Cassidy's debate? I think he is missing the point. The report today is debating making sure we've got a policy that community organisations can be eligible for grants to council. He's talking about what was formerly known as the...
I understand the point that you're making. The councillor's been speaking for some time on the matter of the LMCF. I am waiting on advice to the question from earlier, however, the Lord Mayor did indicate that they're two separate policies. The councillor, I believe, has also moved on, so I would ask that councillor Cassidy has spent seven minutes, ten seconds on this matter and ask him, there's quite a bit of content, ask him to to cover that content, please, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks Chair. And the Lord Mayor certainly talked about the Lord Mayor's Community Fund in in what he talked about and he said that this policy before us today, AP one nineteen, would have flow-on effects to AP one twenty, which I was referring to, which is the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. However, and I will come to this point now and read for councillors' benefit, whether they have received that or not, advice I received from the CEO, which seems to contradict what the Lord Mayor said in that the proposed policy does not change the delegation for the Lord Mayor's Community Fund, which remains a councillor discretionary fund. He said that the policy, this policy is obviously separate to the Lord Mayor's Community Fund and to the AP two fifty, Lord Mayor's Suburban Enhancement Fund under the legislation, council must adopt the grants policy and the policy must include criteria for grants to community organisations and discretionary funds for community purposes. So the legislation is quite clear that we need guidelines for the the grants the council hands out, we need guidelines for the process in which capital funding is allocated through the Suburban Enhancement Fund and we need guidelines for discretionary funding to community organisations. Now, two of those things have been dealt with before the budget. Last year, we had the change...
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
And I apologise to councillor Cassidy, but Mister Chairman, I must draw your attention to paragraph forty six of item C on page nine. It extremely clearly says that this policy applies to councillor discretionary grants. I'm even more confused now if the CEO is saying it doesn't, but our written advice is saying it does and the Lord Mayor was confused. We we need to know, this is it's in black and white, paragraph forty six, as well as in the attachment.
Thank you councillor Johnston, could you please allow me a moment? Councillor Johnston, I have expanded my request for further information to include paragraph 46. I trust that afternoon tea will be relatively soon and that'll provide us more time. I'm going to talk to the chief legal officer and I will provide the information I receive back to the group. Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So as I was saying, the advice from the CEO is quite clear that these guidelines for all of these grants, capital expenditure at councillor discretion and the Lord Mayor's Community Fund discretionary fund require updated guidelines, which we're getting here today with AP 119 around community grants. And his advice specifically talks about allocating inclusion and new reporting requirements for councillors after allocating discretionary funds. And so it talks about these discretionary funds in this advice, but then goes on to say the proposed policy does not change the delegation for the LMCF, which is quite clearly the decision by this administration to keep it as it was, which through their decision and their decision alone means that by law, the level of funding will have to drop. We all knew that would have been the case. Very simple arithmetic told you that when you looked at the level of rates income that this council receives, that if this council and if this Lord Mayor and this administration didn't make changes to the way these delegations were done, under law, they would have to cut the funding. They would have to cut the funding. The Lord Mayor would have to cut the funding. It's not a decision that any minister or state MP has made. It is a decision that this Lord Mayor has made. It is a political decision. It is a cynical political decision that this Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrinna, has made to cut community funding because he would rather pick a fight with the state government in the lead up to the state election than actually lead in the interests of residents and rate payers of Brisbane. So that is extremely disappointing that we're not having an updated guideline come through this council before this budget because we know now from his words last week and from councillor Howard's words this week that they have made a cynical political decision in this budget to slash the level of community funding going to those community groups, which is an absolute shame and absolute disgrace. This item before us, of course, is something that we need to have to meet our legal requirements.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. An extension of time moved by councillor Strunk, seconded by councillor Cook. All those in favour, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Those against, say no and raise your hands. The ayes have it.
Thanks, Chair. So that is a huge disappointment and this administration should hang their heads in shame. The other items before us, clause A, is the Cooperative Research Centre for Water Sensitive Cities. It's approving, as the Lord Mayor said, another 12-month agreement with the Cooperative Research Centre, something which we have been a part of since the 1990s, participating in a specific annual agreement since 2013. Includes a cost today of around $60,000 in cash and $30,000 in-kind contribution from council, but we think that is a worthwhile initiative to support, so we'll be supporting item A. Clause B is to terminate the existing tender process for the hire of dump trucks, excavators, water trucks, loaders, use of brakalra and at Mount Cootha quarries Eagle Farm and Riverview asphalt plants and a temporary asphalt stockpile. What is before us today is an admission that the process in which is going ahead now is one that should have happened at the first point. We would not have needed to open up a tender process again if this administration had just done it properly in the first place instead of just picking one tender through a sole source arrangement. We actually should have had a panel, which would have got us a better result, which ultimately we're getting now. But again, it's wasted money and wasted time, but the outcome is reasonable enough, Chair. Clause D, the Audit Committee and Charter. The reason, obviously, this is here is because the make-up of the Audit Committee is a legal requirement under the City of Brisbane Regulation 2010. We have had significant concerns of the way in which this committee reports back to council and the secrecy around which certain documents are kept from councillors. We get a very brief presee of what is discussed at those committee meetings, but no real detail about the issues and how they are impacting on council's operation. The regulation requires us to appoint this committee for the four-year term, so we realise that that needs to be done. The two main points here are the appointment of the independent members and the Chair and a change in this item from the last time is that the delegation of power to fill casual vacancies now rests with the Establishment Coordination Committee instead of with full council. And we do note that there are no councillors on this committee, it's made up of council officers like the CEO and CFO, representative of the Queensland Audit General or the Queensland Audit Office, as well as these independent members we have before us today. We also have concerns that ENC will set the remuneration of these independent committee members. There's no transparency around which public money is being expended, it'll be kept secret. There may be a discussion that appears in the ENC minutes, but we assume that the level of that remuneration will be kept secret, not only from us, but also from the people of Brisbane who are funding this. And we have consistently and frequently raised concerns around the secrecy of this committee and the way in which they report to us, the elected representatives of the people of Brisbane who sit in council. So we accept there is a requirement to have the Audit Committee, but given the concern around the secrecy of this committee and the changes this administration has chosen to make and giving the Establishment Coordination Committee more power over this committee than the council itself, we won't be voting in favour of this item.
Further speakers?
One of order, Chair.
One of order, councillor Landers.
As requested, Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have left the meeting.
I have a motion moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that this councillor adjourned for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, commencing when all councillors have left the meeting. All those in favour, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And all those against, say no and raise your hands. Thank you. The ayes have it.
Can we, yes, better. Councillors, we have Coram. Are there any other figures? councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. I wish to speak briefly on item A, an agreement between council and the Centre for Water Sensitive Cities, sorry, the Cooperative Research Centre for Water Sensitive Cities. Our ongoing commitment to waterway health in Brisbane is articulated in council's positioning statement, Brisbane Clean Green and Sustainable 2017 to 2031. The administration has a long history on working to improve our water quality and waterway health in this city, and I welcome councillor Cassidy's support for this item. Brisbane City Council has been in partnership with the CRC for Water Sensitive Cities and its predecessors since the 1990s, delivering innovative solutions to improving the livability of cities by managing water sustainably. The agreement between council and the centre is a collaborative investment with world-renowned industry leaders and experts from both Australia and overseas. Through this partnership, council will continue to have access to the forefront of innovation and technology. Council has had an agreement with the centre since 2013, and we have continuously supported the centre and the ongoing agreement over the years to ensure best practice in water management. To date, the partnership has delivered cutting-edge technology tools and on-the-ground solutions that will improve the livability of our city. Some examples of the results of the partnership is the stormwater harvesting systems, stormwater modelling and water smart street trees. The stormwater harvesting programmes are helping community groups as well to save money on water through delivering irrigation systems for sports fields and parks. The work at the centre has generated new technology to better harvest stormwater, to grow trees and provide greater shade while also reducing tree mortality rate. The service provided by the centre will inform future natural infrastructure and asset investment and planning for waterways and wetlands across our city. The partnership gives council access and ability to analyse different options and recommend the best outcomes with respect to urban heat, sustainable water use and management of stormwater quantity and quality. It provides countless savings and ensures council can remain at the forefront of best practice. I support this item and recommend it to the chamber. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston, councillor Johnston, in your, in response to your earlier questions around this, around item C, I've been provided the following advice. Section 196 of the City of Brisbane regulation provides that council may give grants to a community organisation if the purpose of the grant is in the public interest and it meets the criteria of the grants policy. Section 197 of the regulation provides that council must adopt a community grants policy. Section 194 of the regulation provides that a councillor may allocate the councillor's discretionary funds to a community organisation for a community purpose only if it is consistent with the council's community grants policy. The delegation is in respect to section 196 of the regulation, council discretionary funds for community purpose under section 194 are approved by the councillor in accordance with AP 120. In regards to paragraph 46, the position is consistent with the sections outlined in that section and reflects the position which is already provided in AP 199. For further explanation, the dis- dispersments out of discretionary fund using AP 120 must be consistent with AP 119, and that is, that is what paragraph 46 says, that the council's approach to providing grants to community organisations is set out, the requirements are set out in 119, but the operations, and this isn't what's, this is, this is my addition for your benefit, the operation of the discretionary fund is set out in AP 120. Okay, all right, councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, your comments disturbed me even further because it's very clear to me, oh, sorry, I rise to speak with relation to item C. And your comments disturb me even further with respect to the statutory process that is unfolding here. And I'll just preface this by saying that I've raised two weeks ago and again today my concerns about the Lord Mayor's decision to unnecessarily cut this funding. It's very clear that this is a direct decision taken by the Lord Mayor, councillor Adrian Schrinner, and all of the LNP councillors who support these cuts that are coming tomorrow for community groups in the council budget. I do not, nor do the Lord Mayor's ridiculous and juvenile chartings that we can't do, make any changes to how we administer the grants scheme, that is completely incorrect and it happens on a regular basis. Clearly, we need a policy related to the Lord Mayor's community funds that is an approval process that meets our statutory requirements to ensure that the funds amount can be kept without breaching the requirements of the state government funding. Now, yes, that might mean the nature of the funds have changed, but would I prefer that it takes an extra week to go through the Lifestyle Committee to get approval there? Or would I prefer the funding to be cut, and they're the only two choices that I'm aware of? Well, certainly it's the first one. I do not want to see the funding cut, and it's disgraceful that the LNP councillors and the Lord Mayor are preferring that option than a proactive decision to support a change in policy. Now, with respect to item C before us today, I agree completely with all of the statutory provisions that were read out, but the fundamental problem has still not been addressed, and I'm going to address my comments to the fundamental problem. One, AP 120 is not mentioned anywhere in this document whatsoever, in the council papers or in the attachments. All references to it today by the Lord Mayor, by the chairperson of council, not referenced anywhere in here whatsoever. So clearly, whatever this AP 120 change or whatever that might be, it's not envisaged in this document. This is what the policy actually says that is being approved here today. And I'd just urge all councillors to remember, we are personally reliable for the expenditure of these funds. Paragraph 46 says the following, AP 119, Community Grants Policy, the policy outlines council's approach to providing grants to community organisations. The policy also sets out the requirements for use of councillor discretionary funds as required by section 194 of the regulation, which states that funds are allocated in a way that is consistent with council's community grants policy. Fine, that means, number one, councillor discretionary grants are covered by AP 119. It's stated in black and white. Now, the Lord Mayor said earlier today they weren't. Apparently, the CEO of council has written to the leader of the opposition saying they are not covered, yet it is extremely clear in the advice that we are given today that they are covered. And if there was any doubt, you only have to read attachment B, which is the policy itself, and this is where the problem occurs. AP 119, Community Grants Policy, applicability is the heading. This policy applies to all council grants and councillor discretionary funds provided for community projects, but does not apply to sponsorship subsidies and donations. So let me be clear, this policy applies to all council grants and councillor discretionary funds. Again, it's in the actual policy document. Now, here's the bigger problem. The policy document goes on to talk about how councillors can allocate funds, and that's in clauses J, J is the clause, in the attachment, and it goes over several pages. It appears to allow councillors to allocate funds in the same way they always have. However, again, makes it very clear in both this policy document and the council papers before us today that the delegation for approval of grants under this policy is being made by Establishment and Coordination Committee and the Chief Executive Officer. Now, twice today I've raised this issue, and the Chair of Council has not addressed it in any way in respect to the concerns that I've raised. This policy clearly states that all grants under AP 119, which include all of the named council grants and the Lord Mayor's community fund, will have a delegated approval by the Establishment and Coordination Committee and the Chief Executive Officer. Now, that's what's stated very clearly, page 10, Attachment A, Draft Resolution. Either that should be amended to include councillors having approval to delegate, to make decisions on grants, because that seems to be what the intention is, but that is not what is in the documents that is before us today. Clearly, we are being asked to approve a policy that includes discretionary funds. Clearly, the policy before us today is giving the approval for the, giving power for approval of those discretionary funds grants to the Establishment Coordination Committee and the Chief Executive Officer of council. Now, I suspect it's not the intention of council to take away those powers from councillors. The Lord Mayor's made his intention pretty clear, he wants to cut the funds and let councillors allocate next to nothing. However, the written policy documents we are being asked to approve here today give delegated approval for all grants under
Industry leaders and experts from both Australia and overseas. Through this partnership, council will continue to have access to the forefront of innovation and technology. Council has had an agreement with the centre since 2013 and we have continuously supported the centre and the ongoing agreement over the years to ensure best practice in border management. To date, the partnership has delivered cutting-edge technology tools and on-the-ground solutions that will improve the livability of our city. Some examples of the results of the partnership is the stormwater harvesting systems, stormwater modelling and water smart street trees. The stormwater harvesting programmes are helping community groups as well to save money on water through delivering irrigation systems for sports fields and parks. The work at the centre has generated new technology to better harvest stormwater, to grow trees and provide greater shade while also reducing tree mortality rate. The service provided by the centre will inform future natural infrastructure and asset investment and planning for waterways and wetlands across our city. The partnership gives council access and ability to analyse different options and recommend the best outcomes with respect to urban heat, sustainable water use and management of stormwater quantity and quality. It provides countless savings and ensures council can remain at the forefront of best practice. I support this item and recommend it to the chamber. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston, councillor Johnston, in your, in response to your earlier questions around this, around item C, I've been provided the following advice. Section 196 of the City of Brisbane regulation provides that council may give grants to a community organisation if the purpose of the grant is in the public interest and it meets the criteria of the grant's policy. Section 197 of the regulation provides that council must adopt a community grants policy. Section 194 of the regulation provides that a councillor may allocate the councillor's discretionary funds to a community organisation for a community purpose only if it is consistent with the council's community grants policy. The delegation is in respect to section 196 of the regulation, council discretionary funds for community purpose under section 194 are approved by the councillor in accordance with AP 120. In regards to paragraph 46, the position is consistent with the sections outlined in that section and reflects the position which is already provided in AP 199. For further explanation, the dis- dispersments out of discretionary fund using AP 120 must be consistent with AP 119. And that is, that is what paragraph 46 says. That the council's approach to providing grants to community organisations is set out, the requirements are set out in 119, but the operations, and this isn't what's, this is, this is my addition for your benefit. The operation of the discretionary fund is set out in AP 120. Okay, all right, councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, your comments disturbed me even further because it's very clear to me, oh sorry, I rise to speak with relation to item C. And your comments disturb me even further with respect to the statutory process that is unfolding here. And I'll just preface this by saying that I've raised two weeks ago and again today my concerns about the Lord Mayor's decision to unnecessarily cut this funding. It's very clear that this is a direct decision taken by the Lord Mayor, councillor Adrian Schrinner, and all of the LNP councillors who support these cuts that are coming tomorrow for community groups in the council budget. I do not. Nor do the Lord Mayor's ridiculous and juvenile chartings that we can't do, make any changes to how we administer the grant scheme, that is completely incorrect and it happens on a regular basis. Clearly, we need a policy related to the Lord Mayor's community funds that is an approval process that meets our statutory requirements to ensure that the funds amount can be kept without breaching the requirements of the state government funding. Now, yes, that might mean the nature of the funds have changed, but would I prefer that it takes an extra week to go through the Lifestyle Committee to get approval there? Or would I prefer the funding to be cut? And they're the only two choices that I'm aware of. Well, certainly it's the first one. I do not want to see the funding cut and it's disgraceful that the LNP councillors and the Lord Mayor are preferring that option than a proactive decision to support a change in policy. Now, with respect to item C before us today, I, I agree completely with all of the statutory provisions that were read out, but the fundamental problem has still not been addressed. And I'm going to address my comments to the fundamental problem. One, AP 120 is not mentioned anywhere in this document whatsoever, in the council papers or in the attachments. All references to it today by the Lord Mayor, by the chairperson of council, not referenced anywhere in here whatsoever. So clearly, whatever this AP 120 change or whatever that might be, it's not envisaged in this document. This is what the policy actually says that is being approved here today. And I'd just urge all councillors to remember, we are personally reliable for the expenditure of these funds. Paragraph 46 says the following. AP 119, Community Grants Policy, the policy outlines council's approach to providing grants to community organisations. The policy also sets out the requirements for use of councillor discretionary funds as required by section 194 of the regulation, which states that funds are allocated in a way that is consistent with council's community grants policy. Fine, that means, number one, councillor discretionary grants are covered by AP 119. It's stated in black and white. Now, the Lord Mayor said earlier today they weren't. Apparently, the CEO of council has written to the leader of the opposition saying they are not covered, yet it is extremely clear in the advice that we are given today that they are covered. And if there was any doubt, you only have to read attachment B, which is the policy itself. And this is where the problem occurs. AP 119, Community Grants Policy, applicability is the heading. This policy applies to all council grants and councillor discretionary funds provided for community projects, but does not apply to sponsorship subsidies and donations. So let me be clear, this policy applies to all council grants and councillor discretionary funds. Again, it's in the actual policy document. Now, here's the bigger problem. The policy document goes on to talk about how councillors can allocate funds, and that's in clauses J, J is the clause, in the attachment, and it goes over several pages. It appears to allow councillors to allocate funds in the same way they always have. However, again, makes it very clear in both this policy document and the council papers before us today that the delegation for approval of grants under this policy is being made by Establishment and Coordination Committee and the Chief Executive Officer. Now, twice today I've raised this issue and the, the Chair of Council has not addressed it in any way in respect to the concerns that I've raised. This policy clearly states that all grants under AP 119, which include all of the named council grants and the Lord Mayor's community fund, will have a delegated approval by the Establishment and Coordination Committee and the Chief Executive Officer. Now, that's what's stated very clearly, page 10, Attachment A Draft Resolution. Either that should be amended to include councillors having approval to delegate, to make decisions on grants because that seems to be what the intention is, but that is not what is in the documents that is before us today. Clearly, we are being asked to approve a policy that includes discretionary funds. Clearly, the policy before us today is giving the approval for the, giving power for approval of those discretionary funds grants to the Establishment Coordination Committee and the Chief Executive Officer of council. Now, I suspect it's not the intention of council to take away those powers from councillors. The Lord Mayor's made his intention pretty clear, he wants to cut the funds and let councillors allocate next to nothing. However, the written policy documents we are being asked to approve here today give delegated approval for all grants under this policy to the Establishment and Coordination Committee and the Chief Executive Officer. It's clearly on page 10 of the council report before us today. Now, do I think that we should be proceeding without having this matter cleared up? Because it was not addressed in the Chair's comments earlier today. I understand the intention, which is to allow councillors to continue to allocate discretionary funding, but the policy documents and the delegated approvals being issued here today do not say that. Now, this is not the first time that the LNP have stuffed this up. We found out for years the LNP were allowing officers to issue leases when there was no approval to do so. We are going to find that there will be a problem down the track with this as well because what the Lord Mayor has said is different and what the CEO has clearly said to councillor Cassidy based on his verbal advice is clearly different to what is in this policy before us today. Now, the fact that you want to continue to do this without making sure that these things have been done properly and legally is negligent in my view. I would like item C taken seriatum for voting purposes. And I flag-
Seriatum for voting purposes, yep.
Yes, thank you. And I flag that should this council continue with these approvals under this scheme, I will refer the matter straight to the ombudsman because I do not want to be in a position where me or another councillor is being told verbally by the Lord Mayor and the CEO that, no, no, this policy doesn't apply, when clearly the written intention of the E and C papers before us today and the attachments about how the policy will operate are clearly meant to apply to discretionary funds and that the grants processes are being given delegation, delegation, sorry, that delegated power is being given to E and C and the Chief Executive Officer. Now, again, for the record, I'll just clarify, it might not be in your intention to have done this, but that is what is in the written documentation before us today. And from my point of view, that is really problematic. I'm not an insider, I haven't had special briefings from anybody. I have to read the council documents before us today and I'm extremely concerned that there is discrepancies in the verbal advice versus the written information before us today. And it is a concern to me that you are not willing to either make some changes or hold this matter over so that we can ensure that this reflects the intention, which might be that AP 120 still gives councillors discretion, but that should be somewhere in this documentation and it is not. And at the moment, this policy gives approval to administer these grants to E and C and the CEO and not to us as councillors.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I entered the debate on item C, the amendment of the corporate rule, AP 119, Community Grants Policy. And I'd remind the chamber that item C refers to this policy. It does not refer to AP 120, it's the Community Grants Policy that we are discussing here at this debate. As I said earlier in my comments, the reason that we are having to have this discussion is the amendments in section 193B of the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012, which states, and I will quote again, "Changes under subsection five now requires that prescribed amounts of those funds in a financial year to be 0.1% of the council's revenue from general rates from the previous year." Now, that is in relation to the discretionary funding. What we're discussing here today, and that will have an impact on how we do the Lord Mayor's community fund and the Lord Mayor has spoken about that, I've spoken about that earlier in the chamber. What we are discussing here and what is very clearly set out in the documentation that's been sent to all councillors and I know that all councillors thoroughly read and I know that it is quite complicated, so I'm not in any way saying that this is an easy thing for us to understand. We need to put through the, this, this particular amendment to the grants policy so that it can then be reflected in the guideline, which will be for discretionary funding. The AP 120 is the guideline for discretionary funding. So, Mr Chair, I, I know a lot has been commented about this particular item. I hope that clarifies the fact that what we are looking at today and what we are debating is the amendment to the corporate rule and that it is very, very different to the, to the Lord Mayor's community fund, which will be something that will be looked after once this is in place.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yeah, Mr Chairman, I, I, I really think we need clarification. Again, councillor Howard is, and it's important, please, councillor Howard is saying this has got nothing to do with the discretionary funds, but all of the pages-
I didn't say that, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, I'm going to stop you here. Councillor Johnston, it's actually been explained to you three times.
No.
It has, and, and it's-
I understand what you're saying, but you keep referring to something that's different to this, that's not included in this.
No, I, I don't accept your point of order. It's been explained, three different councillors have explained it to you three, each once. Councillor Howard, please continue.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Count, thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I can't be any more clear in saying that item C is referring to the amendment of the corporate rule, AP 119, Community Grants Policy. It is the policy that we need to amend as a result of the, of, of some of the changes to the City of Brisbane Act. I've been through all of that, I'm not going to go through that again. And, and so can I just say that everything is set out within that, within the documents that we have before us? And it, it is really, I've been confused by the fact that people keep referring to a, a document that doesn't exist at the moment. It's, 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 it's as a result of the changes to the City of Brisbane Act that we are today debating this item. And through you, Mr Chair, can I just recommend to the, the, the chamber that, that everyone look clearly at what is being said within that amendment? And it is the fact that we are required to change this, to change this corporate policy as a result of changes to regulations and legislation. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? I see, and I further speak is the Lord Mayor.
I'm sorry. Councillor, Chairman.
All right, all right. Okay, councillor Allen.
Sorry about that, Mr Chair, a bit slow on the button. No, Mr Chair, I just wanted to join the debate briefly on item D, the Brisbane City Council Audit Committee and Charter. As the Lord Mayor touched upon, the establishment of an audit committee is a requirement of the City of Brisbane Regulation and an independent audit committee has been in place for at least 25 years and certainly as long as most people in this chamber can reasonably remember. The, the audit committee reviews council's own internal audit report on our operational risks and control measures. And throughout the year, the council works with the audit committee, other standing members of that particular meeting and also the Queensland Audit Office. So the Queensland Audit Office is closely engaged in the work of the audit committee. So the sort of notion that it's a secretive committee that meets in dark rooms and that there's sort of no engagement and oversight is, is quite frankly nonsense. And so the key requirements of the audit committee are to obviously review the internal audit plan, our financial reporting, keep an eye on the controls and systems that are in place to safeguard the operational risk of the, the organisation and also compliance and ethical standards. So, you know, it has a wide breadth and a very important role to play. Now, the audit committee is independent of, of council and as I noted, the, the responsibility and scope of the audit committee is outlined in the charter that's before us today as well. So, you know, I think the, the reality is that the, this needs to come to council periodically, the, the charter needs to be re-reviewed and reaffirmed periodically and that's what we're doing today. And the charter as it stands sets out the objectives, the authority, responsibility, composition, tenure, reporting and administrative arrangements of the audit committee. We have a group of four people there who we are proposing to be the, the audit committee going forward from this point. And obviously, at points in time, there may be a need to, to have casual vacancies filled, but certainly the, the group before us today are eminently qualified to undertake the roles that we're asking them to undertake, they're, they're experienced in this domain. And, you know, I commend the resolution to the chamber.
Further speakers? To Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Obviously, the item relating to grants and discretionary funds has generated a lot of interest and debate. And I would say that the opposition's position on this is quite extraordinary because what we're talking about here is a change to the City of Brisbane Regulation, which is attached to the act, which is a regulation of the state government, which we are required to comply with relating to councillors discretionary funds. Now, it's important to provide a little bit of background to why this change has been made. The CCC, through their various investigations, have done audits of a number of councils discretionary fund. Councils like Ipswich, Logan, Fraser Coast and Moreton Bay. And the CCC identified some concerns with the use of those discretionary funds. Now, there's been a lot of well-publicised information about Ipswich and Logan and discretionary funds were part of that whole equation. That whole equation which has led to a tarnish across all of local government, which all of us have unfortunately unfairly have to deal with because of the actions of a few. But the CCC identified a number of issues with the use of discretionary funds. And as usual, they provide recommendations and reports. And then what has happened since then is that the state government and indeed the Minister for Local Government, Sterling Hinchcliffe, has put through changes to the regulation in relation to discretionary funds. So, to be clear, there is a clear intent and purpose behind these changes. So it is really quite extraordinary that Labour is pushing the line that, oh, look, just find a way to get around the law, just find a way to get around the regulation. That's right, you can update a few procedures and business as usual, she'll be right, mate. That is effectively what councillor Cassidy was suggesting, that there was no reason to reduce the amount of funds available, that we could simply change some procedures and continue on as usual. I don't know what fantasy land councillor Cassidy is in, Mr Chair, but it doesn't reflect the reality of the situation and the clear intent of the law. The law exists, and whether you agree with it or not, to limit councillors discretionary funds. Now, one councillor suggested that, oh, look, let's just get the CEO to sign off on our recommendation, as though that would make it not a discretionary fund. If you're making a recommendation to the CEO and you expect him to sign off on it, that, I'm afraid, looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, it is a duck, it is a discretionary fund. The alternative is something entirely different to a discretionary fund. The way the Lord Mayor's community fund is set up, it is based on wards. Why? Because there's councillor involvement in that decision. Other grant funds are citywide. But in this case, it's about ensuring that community organisations get provided support and funding through the advocacy and support of local councillors. That is the intent of the Lord Mayor's community fund, but by its intent, it is a discretionary fund. There are other types of grant programmes that can be introduced where community funds could apply, but they wouldn't be decisions that were made based on the recommendations of councillors, as has been suggested here today. That would be a whole different process. It wouldn't be based on a ward-by-ward basis, but instead a citywide basis. And, you know, when you're handing out funding to third-party organisations and community groups, you can't have it both ways. It can't be a fund where the councillor is integrally involved and makes the recommendation and advocates and supports for an application and then pretends it's not somehow discretionary funding. So I think if you look at councillor Cassidy's words and the, the language he used, his priorities were very clear here. He suggested that we should circumvent the regulations in place because they weren't convenient from a political point of view. He was concerned, not really for the community groups that might lose funding or have a reduction in funding, but for the Labour state government and its reputation in the lead-up to the election. He was concerned that I might criticise the state government in the lead-up to the election. That was his concern, not for the community groups of Brisbane that might have a reduction in funding, but for the Labour Party's reputation in the lead-up to the state election. Well, Mr Chair, this legislation is the Labour state government's legislation. This regulation is the Labour state government's regulation. This regulation limits the amount of discretionary funding. I have in front of me the City of Brisbane Regulation, section 193B, which says the following, point two. "The amount the council budgets as discretionary funds for a financial year under subsection 1B must not be more than the prescribed amount for the financial year." And then the prescribed amount for a financial year means 0.1% of the council's revenue from general rates for the previous financial year. That's here in black and white in the regis, in the legislation, in the regulation, and we must comply with that. So any suggestions that somehow we should just get around it, completely inappropriate. And I think that is something that would be not only against the intent of what the state government is trying to do here, but it would definitely be against the intent of what the CCC, the Crime and Corruption Commission, has recommended. So we had to be very, very careful that we're doing the right thing. And just because we don't like a law, we don't just find a way to get around it. Yes, we can argue against the law if we don't like it. Yes, we can debate strongly, but you don't find a way to circumvent a law that you don't like. And that's what councillor Cassidy's suggesting, that's what councillor Johnston has suggested. I did not cut the amount of discretionary-
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I did, Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Don't claim.
No, no.
Mr Chair, I did not cut the amount of discretionary funding available to councillors. That is not something that I have done and that is not something that I have any intention, I had any intention of doing until the advice from our officers and our chief legal officer was that we are required by legislation to do this. And so we have diligently done the right thing, to make sure that we comply, to make sure that the processes are appropriate and transparent and the, the processes also meet the intent of what the state government is imposing here. So, yes, it is disappointing that some community groups will not get the same level of funding that they have from councillors discretionary funds in the past. That is disappointing. But that is the law, that is what we're required to implement. Now, there will be other council grant programmes, to be clear. There will be other grant programmes, not based on a ward-by-ward basis, but on a citywide basis where community groups can apply for funding. They will have to compete against other organisations right across the city. They will not benefit from the intervention or advocacy of their local councillor to get them up the priority list, as you can do with a discretionary fund. And so they will have to- And so they will have to go into the mix, and that will have to be assessed in accordance with the competition with other similar grants. That is not a discretionary fund. That's a standard grants, grants project and grants process. They will continue on. We will continue to provide support for community groups in many different ways, but the reality is really, really very simple. The state government has limited councillors discretionary funds. We must comply, and we should certainly not try dodgy ways of finding a workaround. We should certainly not try to circumvent the laws that have been put in place. And like I said, if you have a problem with those laws, by all means argue against them, but don't suggest that we should circumvent them. Mr. Chair, I think I've said all I can about this particular issue. I personally would prefer that this particular change to legislation didn't exist, because you can be sure that if there are any significant issues with Brisbane City Council's discretionary funding, then they would have been raised and identified. We know that those issues have been in other councils, and we know that other councils have caused this change to legislation, but by all means, we accept that they apply.
Craig Richards.
So, Mr. Chair.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you.
I have a misrepresentation to councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Lord Mayor stated that I'd said earlier that I, that I was encouraging council to circumvent the law. In my speech earlier today, I was very clear that we needed an alternative scheme that met our legislative and practical requirements that was similar to the Ward-Parks trust fund.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. Similarly, the Lord Mayor suggested that I said that council should circumvent state laws and recommendations of the CCC. I did no such thing. The advice we received from the Department of Local Government suggested that there could be a new system put in place, like the Suburban Enhancement Fund, to mean that these grant processes could continue under the Lord Mayor's Community Fund.
Thank you. I'll now put the items, Item A and B. All those in favour of Items A and B, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. Those against, no, and raise your hands. The ayes have it. On Item C, all those in favour of Item C, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. Those against, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Thank you. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnston. Please ring the bells. Please cease swinging the bell. All those in support of Item C, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. Those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
Thank you. Please lower your hand. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, and voting being twenty in favour, one against and six abstentions.
Thank you. The ayes have it. On Item D, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. And those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Please cease swinging the bells. All those in favour of Item D, please raise your hand, hold it there so it may be counted and say aye.
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 Thank you. Please lower your hands. And those voting against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
Thank you. Please lower your hand. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour, one against and six abstentions.
Thank you. The ayes have it. That concludes the Establishment Coordination Committee report. Councillors, the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, please. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of June 2020, be adopted. Take of that.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hammond, to the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 9th of June 2020, be adopted. Is there any debate? The deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I go to the report, I just want to go through two questions on notice for councillor Cook, who was absent last week in committee, so I just wanted to give her the responses. There was a question about the world's biggest garage sale and the temporary use licence that was applied, was, they applied for through the state government. There was an original temporary use licence that was applied for over the entire building three, which is over 2,000 square metres for operation on a daily basis. And at that point in the first round of the information we got from the world's biggest garage, it was for retail. So that is why the council at that point of time did not support the application for temporary use. We thought it would be better to do the retail in the retail zone or centre, which was just a little way down the road. We thought that would be better at the intersection of Junction and Winham Road. However, when the toll was refused by the state, they contacted council again, and we went out on site and spoke with them and realised it was only for one part of that building, so it was a much smaller area. It was not for retail, it was actually for a distribution centre. So there was a bit more information given on the temporary use licence by World's Biggest Garage. With that further information, council made it very clear to the state that we supported their application for a temporary use licence, but the state did not. They asked them to withdraw it within three hours, and they did so. So that was the, the question about that temporary use licence. The other one was about the methodology that we will be using to conduct the zoning survey in Windsor, and based on the petition that was through council, I came through council last week, committee the week before, and it will be the same approach that was applied in the Camp Hill Zone survey, which council required 51% of the property owners identified in the survey area in Windsor to support one of the zoning options. So that was the same as the Camp Hill zoning, which is, I think, what councillor Cook was wanting to clarify. In committee last week, we had a, a development application at 57 Coronation Drive in the city, an impact accessible, integrated mixed-use development, which included the refurbishment of an existing pre-1911 building on site. What was presented is two towers which are proposed catering for over 300 apartments in total. The parking on site has 366 car parks for residents, over 100 for visitors. There's also 423 bicycle spaces on site. But some of the outstanding features in this building is it does actually provide an urban design outcome that's been responsive to Brisbane's subtropical climate and ticks all 31 elements in the Buildings That Breathe guidelines. So their landscaping is over 20% of the site, and their open space at ground level is 68% of the site. In addition to this, there will be charging facilities made available for electric cars and for bikes as well. There is an emphasis on cross-ventilation, natural light, extensive use of sky gardens, including a very high lightweight podium extrusion onto Key Street, which mimics the Queenslander undercroft as well. It has done an absolutely, will have a beautiful renovation of Davison House, which is one of our oldest houses in Brisbane city, with that open space through that atrium, we'll be able to have clear views of the house up from the river and a beautiful water feature that comes back down to the river to remind us of the connection that the house used to have as one of the largest properties that obviously fronted the river in its early days as well. During public notification period in January and February, there were three submitters in total, two objected and one supported. This is an outstanding example of a design that you can get for green buildings that breathe, that have the elements that we want to see for a subtropical city, with the inclusion of a fantastic heritage renovation and sympathy towards that heritage building as well. And I thoroughly recommend it to the chambers. There was also five petitions, and I'll leave those to the chambers for discussion. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I wish to speak in relation to Item B and Item C, two of the petitions that came before the committee. In relation to Item B, it was an interesting exercise. There was a, a new block of townhouses built at Four Lewis Place, Manly West, and local residents living nearby in the existing streets were concerned about traffic coming to and from the townhouse development and causing congestion in Lewis Place. Council required bollards to be built which stopped traffic entering or exiting the townhouse complex from Lewis Place. Residents were forced to use the alternative entrance off Radford Road. However, when the townhouses are occupied, emergency services were directed by their GPS and IT systems to Four Lewis Place, and they had to turn around and try to find the other access to the complex via Radford Road. This happened with ambulance, police and the fire brigade, and precious minutes were wasted. So the Chair of the Body Corporate for the unit block sought advice and applied to council to have the bollards removed. Council staff weighed up the arguments carefully and approved the removal of the bollards. I don't believe there will be a significant increase in the 55 unit occupiers using Lewis Place rather than Radford Road. This is because the Radford Road entrance is more convenient for most residents in getting to work and local shops and shopping centres. So I support what council did. In relation to Item C, this is a matter involving an application to build a block of units in the medium-density area under the Winham Manly Neighbourhood Plan. The maximum height in the medium-density zoning in the Winham Manly Neighbourhood Plan is supposed to be eight storeys. The application was originally for a 12-storey building in the eight-story area. This was opposed by local residents. Seventy-nine residents signed the petition. The original application, as I said, was for 10 stories, but this was reduced to nine stories, and I'm not happy with the response as it does not commit council to an eight-story building. Therefore, even though the applicant has reduced the height of the building, I'm still voting against the response. However, I'm obviously going to support the response to Item B, but oppose response to Item C. Thank you.
Further speakers?
Yep.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. And just at the outset, can I just ask that C, E and F be dealt together as a block, and then A, B and D together?
So you're asking for Items C, E and F to be voted on, seriate them together?
Yep. And then that leaves A, B and D together.
Of course. Please proceed.
Yes, so thanks very much, Chair. So the item that I'm going to speak on tonight is Item F, which is a series of petitions requesting council not include provisions for six-story buildings in the Sandgate District Neighbourhood Plan. So the Sandgate Neighbourhood Plan is a story of some intrigue, Chair. A few years ago, I joined the, I joined members of the community in calling for my community to have their say on how our community will develop over the next 20 years. There's a common theme there, community. But what we got, unfortunately, like so many other neighbourhood plans are seeing come through this place, was council trying to tell the people of my community what they had to have, rather than listen to what they wanted and listen to how they wanted their community to develop over the next 20 years or so. When details were released, without much fanfare, I in fact read about the changes proposed in the draft strategy on the Curumail website before council officers came to my office to brief me on it. And, oh boy, were they embarrassed when they arrived and realised that press release had gone out before they got to me. What ensued after that was pretty swift and pretty dramatic. A community campaign to stop the rezoning of Deegan for units and townhouses and to stop six stories in Sandgate quickly revved up, Chair. People hadn't asked for this kind of rezoning. What they felt was council was telling them that they would simply be getting it. Now, one of the reasons I don't support the recommendation that is here before us today is because the Lord Mayor has set a pretty strong precedent when it comes to the Sandgate and District Neighbourhood Plan. He unilaterally declared that Deegan would not be rezoned for units and townhouses because, in his own words, people didn't want it there. So he listened to them, and he, he committed publicly that that wouldn't happen because people had said that they didn't want it. And that's even before a petition opposing it reached this council chamber. But he said the community sentiment wasn't as strong when it came to six stories in Sandgate. Well, I think what is before us today and what came to council last week should clear up any confusion for the Lord Mayor, Chair. Last week, we saw a petition essentially in support of six-story development in Sandgate come to council, which had less than 100 signatures on it. Today, we have two petitions opposing six-story development in Sandgate, which has 2,714 signatures opposing that. So to me, that's pretty clear. That passes that test that the Lord Mayor set himself and set this council, that if a community says they don't want it, then they don't get it. So, Chair, through you to the Lord Mayor, I am calling on him today to rule out six stories being included in the Sandgate District Neighbourhood Plan draft, which is due in the coming months, because quite clearly before us today, my community has said, no, they don't support it.
Further speakers? Councillor Stray.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on Item E, the petition regarding Spring Hill. And I must say, I empathise with a lot of the concerns that residents of Spring Hill are raising, because they sound very familiar to the issues that residents of other inner-city suburbs in my ward have also been troubled by. And I think all these issues that have been raised by the petition, including failure to protect local heritage and character, lack of safe cycling routes, traffic and parking impacts, inadequate drainage and road infrastructure, et cetera. They're all essentially indications of poorly planned development and a systemic failure for infrastructure and public services to keep up with the demands of a change in and rapidly densifying neighbourhood. And I think what, what these concerns show and the fact that residents are raising these issues indicates to me that council, the council's current approach, not just to planning for development and infrastructure, but also to making decisions about what those priorities are, is sorely lacking. And in particular, I think the fundamental concern that sits under all of these discrete issues that have been raised is that the local residents themselves do not have enough meaningful control over what happens in their neighbourhoods. Reasonable people can disagree about how often the rubbish bins ought to be emptied and how, how many street trees we should be aiming to plant in a given area, et cetera. But the point is that residents themselves do not have enough meaningful say over those decisions. They don't have enough input, and they certainly don't have enough information about why particular decisions are being made. The other obvious problem here is that decisions aren't, and, and changes to a neighbourhood are being considered holistically. So a, a change in, in, from one development, increase in traffic in one area, isn't matched by corresponding planning in terms of road infrastructure or lighting or footpath upgrades, et cetera. So one project or one, whether it's a private or public project, one project in one area has negative flow-on impacts to other areas of council, but there's not a cohesive plan or strategy around how all those impacts will be managed collectively. And I think this, this highlights some of the failures of council's current neighbourhood planning process, where what we call a neighbourhood plan is essentially just a land use plan that doesn't go into enough detail, doesn't meaningfully address proactive, proactive issues around transport, green space, et cetera. So I'm, I'm really feeling for those residents in Spring Hill, and I think the, the response that in that petition probably isn't going to satisfy them, because it doesn't acknowledge the underlying systemic issues at play here. And so when people are raising concerns about speeding vehicles or illegal parking, council is responding that those are enforcement issues, not understanding that it's probably council's poor planning and approval of excessive developments that have led to those issues becoming so prominent in the first place, and particularly around. And particularly around speeding vehicles, there's an obvious case in inner-city areas for redesigning roads to slow down traffic and prioritise pedestrians and cyclists. And in fact, there are parts of Spring Hill where the roads are quite narrow because they evolved in an era of walkable neighbourhoods before the motor car became prominent. But the council's failure to acknowledge that it does need to take some responsibility for speeding vehicles is really concerning here. There should be an acknowledgement by council that if there are persistent patterns of vehicles travelling too fast or people parking in dangerous spots, that that is also a design problem and a policy problem. It's not just a function of a problem of enforcement. And I, I haven't spoken to these residents individually, but I, I just, all the issues they were raising really resonated with me. We have the same problem in suburbs like Western, Woolen Gavron and Kangaroo Point, where service pits and trenches aren't being maintained properly. We also see stormwater drains getting blocked and not cleared of rubbish. These are persistent problems that we can report when they pop up on an individual basis. But there's a broader structural failure for council, on council's part, to manage these issues, but also to plan the neighbourhood so that these issues don't arise as frequently in the first place. And so I won't be supporting that petition response. And I think it's going to fall a long way short of what residents were expecting. But yeah, even in terms of bicycle improvements, I'd, I'd hope that the, the mayor and the Chair of Active Transport will, will look at the concerns that residents in this area are raising and explore opportunities to link the proposed CBD bicycle grid, which by the way, is a great idea and well done. But to link, to think strategically about how that CBD bike grid might link up towards suburbs like Spring Hill so that it is safe for people to ride around their neighbourhood and, and so that fast-moving e-scooters don't have to share narrow footpaths with pedestrians. Thanks.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. Just, I'm sorry, just briefly on item E, the renewal strategy for Spring Hill. And I just asked that that's taken seriate them for voting purposes.
All right, so councillor Johnston, it was already seriate them, but in a group it will now be council. E will now be taken, seriate them and alone. Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. I just want to make a few remarks about this. From what I understand, the petitioners are asking for council to take action to fix systemically, I guess, a number of issues in Spring Hill. And I agree with very much of what councillor Shree had said about council's lack of planning in older suburbs and the lack of coordination around the needs of these suburbs. Neighbourhood planning is a failed process. You know, most neighbourhood plans in this city are not supported by their local councillor or the residents. And it is really disappointing, I think, that in response to residents asking council to take action, council's response to them is to put a bunch of subheadings in a letter back to them, telling them all the things they have done. And that's not good enough. And I think that reflects the problem with this LNP administration. They've stopped looking at what needs to be done in future and they are relying simply on all the things they have done, which frankly are now out of touch. The Spring Hill Neighbourhood Plan, when it came through, was very controversial and the residents didn't support it and I didn't support it at the time either. And I know that those residents, they did contact me during the week to raise their concerns about this petition. And I know that they have significant issues with the planning regime under the neighbourhood plan and the lack of investment in infrastructure. Now, I just want to say that I won't be supporting this item for the sole purpose that it won't meet the petitioners' concerns. And unfortunately, this LNP administration has been elected again for another four years. And I say to all of the people of Brisbane, when you vote for them, this is what happens. They simply keep doing the same things they've always done, which is to ignore the residents of Brisbane, particularly those in wards that they do not hold. They have no new ideas about how to take the city forward. And when you raise genuine issues with them about how to address complex issues in really old inner-city suburbs, they just want to tell you what they did, not what they will do in the future.
Further speakers? I see no hands. The deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank the councillors for their contribution. I'll just go through those responses one by one. Yes, councillor Cumming is correct, it was a very different one for Four Lewis Place at Manly West, but I'm glad that we could get a change to the DA conditions, which is not always easy. But listening to the residents and their experience, I'm glad we've got an outcome and hopefully the platform will deal with any traffic issues they have. With regards to the application for West Avenue at Winham, we have sent a letter, the information request back to the applicant on the 3rd of April, telling them to reduce the bulk and scale, increase the deep planning, increase the setbacks among other things, and they are in the process of amending their plans. I recognise councillor Cumming that eight stories is the code assessable level in this area, but the Planning Act by the state government allows performance outcomes and we can't just say no higher than eight stories. We'll wait for their amended plans and we'll see what the changes are to that and assess it accordingly. With regards to the Sandrake District Neighbourhood Plan and neighbourhood plans in general, again councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, he's the one who just doesn't get it. I'd like to think he just doesn't get it, or I tend to think that the, those on the opposite side prefer not to get it. There is no way that a council officer in Brisbane City Council went out to the residents of the Deegan Ward and said, here's your map, you're just getting it. That is outrageous. And he knows full well, I expect he knows full well through you, Mr Chair.
What a chair. Board of councillor Cassidy?
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted councillor Adams.
I wrote it down here. You said they came out and said, this is what you're getting. What the officers go out with is a draft strategy for consultation with ideas and concept. Something has to go on the map for consideration. The town planners in council put out what they think is what the city needs for economic development, for the housing strategy, for the vibrancy of suburbs, for the opportunities and what we are required to deliver through the South East Queensland Regional Plan. It is full consultation and what we see here today is a petition from many residents, yes, who are having their say on those ideas and their concepts. That's exactly the point. It is not something that is forced down the throat of any residents in neighbourhood planning. It is a draft strategy whenever we go out anywhere across the city. And it's vexatious for councillor Cassidy to say otherwise because he knows exactly how it works. And yes, his residents have spoken and we will.
What a councillor Cassidy.
Wanted to be misrepresented.
Councillor Adams?
Thank you. And it is under consideration now, based on all the feedback that we got over the last 18 months while it's been out with the community. With regards to the renewal strategy for Spring Hill, again, we hear that people on the other side, councillors on the other side, don't like to hear what neighbourhood planning is. It is a land use plan. Councillor Shree, I think, said, well, the neighbourhood plans are just land use plans. Yes, they are. That's exactly what they are. Land use plans under the state government's Planning Act. Land use plans. What we have here is a beat-up by the Greens during the council election by 18 people signing it here on what they would like to see in Spring Hill in a renewal strategy, which is not what renewal strategies look at, and a list, a long list of things in this petition, which I thought, through you, Mr Chair, councillor Johnson would appreciate the headings. And maybe if she bothered to read it properly, which is not always the strong point, she would see that those headings clearly show what we are going to be doing with relations to those headings. Not what we've done, what we are going to be doing. We are looking at options for cycling infrastructure under the city plan and the bicycle network overlay plan. We are looking at the city lighting and an upgrade for Robert Street has been scheduled. Brisbane Infrastructure will continue to monitor the footpaths. Service pits and trenches, please let us know. We'll pass them on to the people who do look after them, which is not council. But the reality is, we didn't plan Spring Hill. No one planned Spring Hill. It has been there for more than 150 years. It is definitely in the time of walkable suburbs. It's the time at the most, maybe horse and cart. They have heritage trails, they have heritage street signage, they have plaques. But the reality is, if you want to keep those hundreds of heritage places and beautiful cottages that we have in Spring Hill, that does not actually fit with bike lanes down the street and street trees on their very narrow footpaths. So the philosophy over here, through you, Mr Chair, councillor Shree, is wonderful in his little utopia that he thinks city planning is. But the reality is, you can't keep your heritage and the nature of that suburb and do everything that would be wonderful in a brand-new big city. We are managing it through the mechanisms that we have. And again, the reality is not what councillor Shree understands at all. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor Cassidy, you had two items of misrepresentation.
Yeah, thanks Chair. First of all, the deputy mayor claimed that I said council officers went out and said to the community, this is what you're going to have. Exactly what I said was that council was trying to tell people what they had to have and wouldn't listen to them. So that's the first point, you got that wrong. On the second point, the deputy mayor said that I was vexatious to suggest that this isn't a normal part of the council's consultative process for a neighbourhood plan, making people, you know, start petitions to have their voices heard. I think she's way off the mark when it comes to that, Chair.
Right, on our put items A, B and D, all those in favour of items A, B and D, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and lower your hands. And those against, please raise your hands and say no. But the ayes have it. Items, on our item C and item F, item C and F, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower them and those against, those against item C and F, please raise your hand and say no.
No.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Division. Division called by councillor Strunk and I think councillor Cassidy, please ring the bells. All those in favour of items C and F, please raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted. Please lower your hands. And those against, please raise your hands and say no and hold them there so it may be counted.
No.
Please lower your hands. Pluks, read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and seven against.
The ayes have it. So that's the ayes have it on A, B and D and on C and F, the ayes have it. Now, item D, excuse me, item E, I should say, item E, all those in favour of item E, please raise your hand, say, and say aye.
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 Please lower your hands. Those against, please raise your hand and say no. The ayes have it. All right, we're moving on. Councillors, the Public and Active Transport Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of June 2020, be adopted.
Been moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Owen, the report of the public, an active transport committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 9th of June 2020, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Murphy?
Thanks very much, Chair. Last committee's, last week's committee presentation was on the history of Brisbane's cross-river bridges. As we all know, the Brisbane River is our greatest asset in, in this city and it's actually one of our most important corridors and connectors. But it also presents very unique challenges when it comes to how we move around our city. I did a little bit of digging and I found that 140 suburbs actually border the Brisbane River. You wouldn't think it's that many, would you? Probably half of them are in councillor Adamans Ward, but certainly that is a significant amount of suburbs. Currently, there's five bridges providing pedestrian and cycle access to the inner-city area. Busiest bridge is the Victoria Bridge with an estimated 6 million crossings per year. This is followed by the Goodwill Bridge with an estimated 4.6 million crossings per year. In terms of our historic bridges, the committee heard some data about those. The Breakfast Creek Bridge, which opened in 1826, was Brisbane's first bridge. It connected Brisbane's penal settlement to the female prison at Eagle Farm. It wasn't until free settlers began to arrive in the early 1840s that the need for a bridge crossing of the Brisbane River arose. The young colony foresaw the need for a permanent river crossing and a competition was launched to design a new bridge. Victoria Bridge, Brisbane's first river crossing bridge, was opened in June 1865. At the time, it was a temporary timber structure while the colonial government and then the then Brisbane Council continued to negotiate the design of a permanent bridge. The bridge was narrow and allowed for light vehicles only, with freight having to be barged across the river. Due to the bridge piles being scoured by heavy rains and floods in late 1866 and early 1867 and suffering from marine bore damage, the bridge unfortunately collapsed in just over two years. So certainly we're hoping for a longer life for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. Populace had to revert to using ferries once again and a permanent bridge was then constructed in 1874 with the formation of the Greater Brisbane Authority in, or the Greater Brisbane Council, the what would then become the Brisbane City Council in 1924. Bridges were seen as a critical need for the future development of Brisbane. In 1925, the Cross River Commission was appointed. First bridge they recommended was the Gray Street Bridge, which was later renamed the William Jolly Bridge in 1955 in honour of the First Lord Mayor of Greater Brisbane. Work on the concrete-encased steel structure began in 1928 amid concerns held by the state government that the cost of the bridge at £700,000 sterling during the height of the Great Depression was excessive. The bridge opened in March 1932. The Victoria Bridge was still Brisbane's only road crossing over the river and congestion was becoming an issue. Second bridge recommended by the commission was the Story Bridge, now one of our city's most significant icons. And anywhere you see the silhouette of the Story Bridge, you could instantly recognise that that belongs to Brisbane. It was once, once the second largest bridge in Australia, exceeded only by the Sydney Harbour Bridge. Construction of the Story Bridge commenced in 1935 with the bridge opening in 1940. Now, we've spoken a lot about AR5 green bridges, but the existing green bridges include the Jack Pesch Bridge, the Eleanor Chanel Bridge, the Goodwill Bridge, the Karilpa Bridge and then the Neville Bonner Bridge, which is currently under construction. I can see the barges out on the river right now. The Jack Pesch Bridge is Brisbane's first pedestrian and cycle-only bridge. The bridge crosses the Indirupili River, the Indirupili reach of the river linking Chelma and Indirupili. It's located immediately adjacent to the Albert and Walter Taylor Bridge and opened on the 2nd of October 1988. The Eleanor Chanel Bridge opened in December 2006. It was the first bridge in Australia to be built exclusively for buses, bicycles and pedestrians. It's an important part of Brisbane. It's an important part of Brisbane's busway network, helping to reduce the number of buses on Coronation Drive. The Goodwill Bridge, the Goodwill Bridge links the southern end of the South Bank to the CBD and that was part of the South Bank Master Plan in 1997, which was released in 1997. An architectural competition for design of the pedestrian and cycle bridge was held with construction commencing in May 2000 and the bridge opened in October 2001. The bridge is six and a half metres wide and spans a length of 128 metres. In December 2004, Queen's Government's Department of Public Works and Council agreed on the need for another bridge as part of the City West Strategy. The Carilpa Bridge project began in early 2006 when we had a design competition. The design was undertaken then between February and July 2007, so quite a quick process, and was finished by October 2009. It used that Tensegrity, which I think is a portmanteau of tension and integrity. I think it's one of Brisbane's most iconic bridges. I know it's not everyone's favourite, but I'm a big fan of the Carilpa Bridge. Council carefully balances a mix of other transport offerings available, from buses and trains to increasingly popular micro mobility options such as e-scooters and cycling. There's no doubt that Brisbane is facing a generational change in the way its residents and commuters move around our city with new infrastructure like these green bridges and Brisbane Metro coming online, not to mention Cross River Rail as well. Chair, the committee had one presentation, which was a petition to extend the North Brisbane Bike Way along Dixon Street to Eagle Junction. It was recorded as unanimous support from all committee members. The recommendation being that there is currently three, three different alignments for the stage five of the North Brisbane Bike Way or at various stages of design maturity and different levels of community support. And so this stage will be going to the Active Travel Advisory Committee, which I've jointly established with the State Minister for Transport and Main Roads, Mark Bailey. And that committee will be meeting in, in July to consider what alignment we, we should proceed and take some recommendations from stakeholder groups around that. So that is the recommendation before us and happy to leave for the debate in the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair. Just speaking tonight on item B, the petition requesting council build a safe and separated bike way that continues from Dixon Street to Eagle Junction. Something which the people who started the petition for the North Bicycle Users Group have called the all the way to EJ Bike Way from Dixon Street, corner Price Street and Moolowan to Jackson Street in Clayfield. I know councillor Murphy and councillor McLaughlin and a number of other people received a letter from the Brisbane North Bug which outlined the importance to them and their members and other cyclists that use this route or, and particularly those that would use this route if it was, if it was built as a separated and protected bike way. And it explains it very well. And I think, given how much work they've put into it, I will read into the record some of, some of the arguments they have put forward and I'm sure it will inform council, councillors, councillor Murphy and the local councillor, councillor McLaughlin and the committee as well, the new Active Transport Advisory Committee on the importance of this project. And the first, the first point of note to me is that it will be a useful for people seeking an alternative route or an alternative mode to public transport without being forced into private vehicles. So for those that are genuinely concerned about a choice between different modes, this is a good project where there is a genuine option out there, not just simply a line on a map suggesting that this is a primary cycle route, or some paint on the road, but a genuinely separated cycle way which gives people that choice. There were 400 people signing this petition, which was lodged last year, which is, which is a good indication that it has broad community support, I think. They stay to the north, the missing link along Dixon Street and through Eagle Junction will connect with the Jim Sawley and Gateway Bike Ways, two of the most well-used and increasingly used bike ways on the north side of Brisbane, benefiting communities all the way from Nunda to Sandgate and beyond the city of Brisbane out to Redcliffe along the Moreton Bay Cycle Way. Also improve access to Brisbane Airport Precinct, which is a fast-growing employment hub, was up until a couple of months ago. Hopefully, as we emerge from COVID-19, we will see that second runway reopen and as a, as an employment driver within the outer northern suburbs, it will be significant. And this would be a great way to connect people through active transport to that, to that hub and to solve a lot of traffic problems as well. To the south, the path will connect to the high-quality North Brisbane Bike Way, improving access to the CBD, a genuine commuter access to the CBD, the Royal Brisbane Hospital and the fast-developing Echo Precinct at Bowen Hills. And they say as well as many other, many other destinations. So I think it's a, certainly a well-thought-out and thoroughly good project that they have proposed here. And I certainly hope in, in supporting this and the recommendation, that it will be a project that will be considered by council and will be considered by the new Active Transport Advisory Committee, that it is something that will be supported. We don't know, won't know until tomorrow, as the Lord Mayor keeps saying, what level of bike way funding there will be. We know over the last two terms in council, there have been 225 million, 250 million allocated to that. There's still some conjecture around where all that money has in fact been spent on bike way projects, the number of carryovers there have been and project delays and project changes. But this is certainly one that should be considered in a, in an accelerated pace, I think. And what we're seeing as we emerge, Chair, from, from COVID-19 in terms of the health lockdown. We want to see job-ready projects, shovel-ready projects that support jobs, and this is certainly one of those. And projects that's, that continue to connect our suburbs and this is absolutely one of those. People have, as they've been stuck at home more and their lives have changed, have fundamentally fallen in love with their suburbs again and their ability to get around our city is coming to sharp focus. And this is certainly one of those. Where you're forcing people who want to cycle to commute and they want to make that genuine choice to jump out of their car, onto a bike and cycle to work, whether it's the RVH routes and the CBD or whether it's out at the Brisbane Airport. When they want to make that genuine change, we need to support that through what is, compared to large road projects, very affordable infrastructure to get people moving. We need to accelerate the conversation around Brisbane's mobility in moving people. And that includes by car, by public transport, bus, trains and ferries in different parts of the city. But it also fundamentally has to be about moving people on foot and on bike, as well as genuine alternatives to private motor vehicle travel. And we think this is a project that should be accelerated and prioritised this, this term in council and within the next year. Thanks Chair, we'll be supporting that.
Further speakers, councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on the two items before us, items A and B. Just briefly on items A, recognising that the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge proposal is a very good proposal to extend the bridge from the Kingston Smith Drive infrastructure that we currently have across Breakfast Creek to Newstead. The existing Breakfast Creek Bridge isn't what you'd regard as friendly to either pedestrians or to cyclists. And the proposal for a specific connection across Breakfast Creek from the Loris Bonney River Walk, which is a fantastic bit of infrastructure delivered as part of the Kingston Smith Drive project across to Newstead and then connecting through around Newstead Park, I presume, to existing bike way networks is a, a great proposal. I certainly look forward to seeing the, the plans for that particular bridge alignment. And certainly has my support as the, the local councillor. On item B, I certainly am pleased to see this petition come forward for consideration and that it's taken into account with other proposals that have been put forward for continuing on the state's bike way infrastructure, the North Brisbane Bike Way, which will be taken through along Dixon Street as far as Price Street. However, there are some issues of concern that I have. I have always expressed my view that it's a great shame that the North Brisbane Bike Way proposal didn't take advantage of the state government-owned land on the other side of Dixon Street, rather than a corridor of land that it had between the railway line and Dixon Street. I know the state is intent, instead of selling that land for real estate development. I, I think that's a great shame that that opportunity has been missed. In terms of what is now being proposed and delivered, that is bike way on roadway. While I'm aware of what the North Brisbane Bicycle Group have put forward, other bike users have asked me to say, to ask the question, why doesn't it go to the, one of the primary drivers of bike users, bike use in the area, and that's the Kedron High School, which generates hundreds and hundreds of bike users in the area. And there have been proposals that link up to the Kedron Brook Bike Way on the other side of Kedron High so that they can get across off the existing bike way infrastructure there. However, there are a number of ideas. I welcome this idea also being taken forward for consideration. And we certainly do support a connection of, of the existing bike way infrastructure through to all points north. And this is one of those ideas. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on item A, the history of Brisbane's cross river bridges and the green bridges programme. Firstly, can I say, I've watched with some interest over the last few days, the announcement about the proposed new green bridges. And it's really interesting to watch. It's a bit hard to know what this administration is up to because councillor Murphy's right that last year, the Lord Mayor, very first thing he did was announce very proudly these five new green bridges. And he was definitely going ahead with these five new green bridges and, you know, listed where they were going to be and told us how much money they were going to cost. And since then, it's just appeared that they're backpedaling. So on the weekend, at some point, I understand, there was a press release about the Kangaroo Point Bridge. I understand from speaking with the journalists today that the LMP couldn't even be bothered to go out and speak about it. So the signature project of the Lord Mayor, councillor Shrinna, announced with so much fanfare just over a year ago, has now been reduced to a press release that no one, not the Lord Mayor, not the deputy mayor, not the chairman councillor Murphy, could even pop their head out to speak to journalists about. I also note with great concern that the price tag of 550 million, well, $190 million of that. Now, that's also got to be a rubbery figure based on the way this administration delivers major projects. Because they seem to run over budget all the time. That's a huge component. So I guess the Bell Barry one's getting ditched based on what I've seen so far, or maybe one of the others. So really, the project announced with great fanfare a year ago has, has already been slashed. And I guess that just gives you some idea about how badly this Lord Mayor is managing the major infrastructure projects of this city. But the reason I'm speaking today, and I have to say, this just says every single thing that you want to know about this LMP administration. It says it, and Brisbane City Council, just quietly, it says it all in this project, in this presentation. So the presentation was about, and I quote, "the history of Brisbane's cross river bridges." Now, I'm like, oh, okay, this must be a wonderful, you know, a bit like councillor Maddick. He did like the history of buses from, you know, 1903 to 1905. And then we had the history of buses about another six times after that.
Steering wheels.
Yeah, they, they were excellent presentation. Then there were the barges too. I remember they went, they divvied them up into years and he, he, he did run that out for quite a while. But I'm just going to say this. So you would think in a presentation that is called "The History of Brisbane's Cross River Bridges", that there might be some information in the report about one of Australia's most unique bridges. The second only bridge to be built across the Brisbane River. A bridge that is the only inhabitable bridge anywhere in the world. It is the greatest or the, the longest span suspension bridge. You would have thought that maybe, maybe a report on the history of bridges might actually mention the significance of the second bridge ever to be built in Brisbane, the Walter Taylor Bridge. Now, the Walter Taylor Bridge was actually conceived, designed and built by Walter Taylor. He was a very significant architect of his time and he is responsible for a number of significant buildings, both in my ward and around Brisbane, including things like the RNA Showgrounds pavilions. So in the twenties, he took up Brisbane City Council's idea that we needed new bridges. And he went to council to have those funded, but I guess they said no. So he went out and raised the money himself. It's really interesting, cost £85,000. Construction started in 1930 and the bridge was opened by the governor in 1936. Now, that's well before the Story Bridge. Story Bridge was only just starting to be built when the second ever bridge in Brisbane's history was built. Now, it is a very significant bridge out our way. And the only reference to it in this whole report is that it, that the Jack Pesh Bridge, controversial. You know, you ask anybody out my way and they just shake their heads and say, how on earth could council have botched up building that without addressing the issue of the capacity of the Walter Taylor Bridge? But the only mention of the Walter Taylor Bridge in this is that it's located next to the Jack Pesh Bridge. I think that sort of indicates how this council and this administration consider the importance of the Walter Taylor Bridge and cross river traffic in the western suburbs of Brisbane. It's irrelevant. That's extremely clear from this report. The second bridge ever to be built in Brisbane is completely ignored. The significance of it from a cultural point of view, historic point of view, construction point of view. You'd think maybe to get a paragraph in this report, but no, it's irrelevant. Other than, you know, just to give some context to where the Jack Pesh Bridge is, it's located next to the Walter Taylor Bridge. Now then I thought when I read this, well, maybe this is just all about the bridges council built. Because council didn't acquire this bridge until 1965. So it has been part of council's stable of assets for longer than most of the other bridges that are actually in this report as well anyway. And it's a very significant council asset. So then I thought, well, maybe they've only talked about bridges, you know, that were built by council. But that's not true because Goodwill Bridge, Carilpa Bridge, Neville Bonner Bridge, not built by council, doesn't form part of our council assets. So I guess this is just a reflection of of how this administration and how this council thinks about the, the western and the southwestern suburbs. Based on this, you would not know anything about the importance of the Walter Taylor Bridge. You would not know it was the second only ever bridge built in Brisbane and well before the Story Bridge was built. It was an epic achievement by Walter Taylor, a very distinguished constituent of my ward. And it is a shame that this administration continues to neglect long-term planning for the Walter Taylor Bridge and Oxley Road. Because these are issues of significance to the community that I represent. But sadly, it is now clear why. They don't consider it to be of any significance to discuss at all in a presentation about Brisbane's cross river bridges. And that sort of indicates to me that they consider it to be not worthy of mention and pretty much irrelevant. And I would just say to the chairperson of council and to the council officers who prepared this presentation, the oversight of mentioning such a significant bridge reflects quite poorly on you.
Further speakers? Councillor Murphy? On our put the, the, on our put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, please lower your hands. Those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of June, 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Maddick, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 9th of June, 2020, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor McLaughlin?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just briefly, the presentation sounded a little dry in the title, but it was actually a very exciting and dynamic presentation on the technology that's used to change traffic lights when vehicles and other users come up to traffic lights. It's great to know that we are always looking at what might be the alternatives to the old faithful, that is, the loops in the ground that, that everybody sees. That remains the, the best and most viable technology, but there are other technologies that are available and they are tested from time to time. They also come at an expense. That was what the presentation was to the committee last week about what the alternatives can be or might be to the pavement induction loops. But to date, there's been nothing that comes close to providing the same cost benefit effectiveness of those detection loops. Mr. Chair, there was a petition there as well. I'll leave it at that stage for debate of the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to speak on item B and ask that it be taken seriatum for voting. Thanks.
Item B, seriatum for voting. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the petition requesting council install traffic lights at the intersection of Malloy, Malloy, sorry, and Richmond Roads Cannon Hill. Mr. Chair, I want to very clearly put on the record my position about this petition and the situation with Richmond Road and some of the associated intersections, including the one at Malloy Road. Mr. Chair, until the election in March, this intersection was in the Morningside Ward and with the redistribution is now in Doughboy Ward. This intersection has been an issue for my community for a very long time and there have been multiple requests by my office and my predecessor councillor Sutton for upgrades to this intersection. It has been part of our budget submissions for a number of years and this LMP council has repeatedly failed to fund any substantive upgrades. Even in the last six months, Mr. Chair, I have received multiple requests from residents for upgrades to this intersection, reduction of speed on Richmond Road and improvements to be made to the pedestrian crossing next to this intersection. All of these requests have been sent through to council officers and the responses, Mr. Chair, from council have been quite varied, to say the least. I'll discuss that in a bit more detail shortly. Mr. Chair, this road is incredibly busy. It connects to two schools, St Oliver Plunkett and Cannon Hill State School. It also connects with Winham Road. This makes this intersection an important connection between those two roads and it's particularly busy during school drop off and pickup. I previously supported SAM signs on Richmond Road and will continue to support rotations to this location as speeding is an issue and we need to do what we can as council to slow down traffic at this location to ensure the safety of pedestrians, many of which are schoolchildren, cyclists as well as motorists. This petition response today, Mr. Chair, from council is completely unacceptable. This petition very clearly requests traffic lights. The petition response says that council has determined that neither the intersection of Richmond Road and Malloy Road nor the pedestrian crossing warrants the installation of traffic lights. Council very clearly does not support traffic signals. Mr. Chair, I do not support that response. Councillor Atwood, the new councillor for this local area, has put on record that she does. She does not think this intersection needs traffic lights. She does not think it warrants an upgrade. She is not fighting for her local area on this issue. This petition response also says that there were only two reported crashes in the past five years. There have been some questions previously raised about this type of data, Mr. Chair, and what the metrics are for the data. I am personally aware and have been contacted by members of the community at least three times in the last two and a half years since I've been the local councillor, reporting at least three crashes at that intersection. And just last week, Mr. Chair, there was a crash at the intersection, the next street up, at Stanton Street and Richmond Road. Why that is of interest, Mr. Chair, is that there was an extensive online commentary about that intersection. And in that commentary, councillor Atwood weighed in and she said, and I quote, "A set of lights along Richmond Road would help break the traffic up. Couldn't agree more, Mr. Chair. That's exactly what we've got before us today." Later in the comments, she again says, "I'll try to get that slowdown for SAM ASAP and work towards the lights." So I'm looking forward to hearing from councillor Atwood today on this issue. I want to know why she would support traffic lights the next street up, but not on Malloy and Richmond Roads, which clearly has the higher traffic volumes, connects two schools and is 12 metres from a very well used, but frankly quite dangerous pedestrian crossing. Further, Mr. Chair, council officers in February this year, in response to concerns I raised with them about Richmond Road, said, and I'm going to quote them, "Installing traffic signals at one of the intersections of the more heavily trafficked connecting roads between Winham Road and Richmond Road", and in brackets, they, they point out, "Lang Street, Malloy Road and Muir Street", close brackets, "would provide a safe, fully controlled pedestrian crossing point." It goes on to say, "As the intersection of Malloy Road and Richmond Road is a four-way junction, signals at this location would also provide a safe option for residents in the catchment area to the south of Richmond Road to cross right, to turn right or cross Richmond Road." So I'm completely confused, Mr. Chair. Council officers have put in writing, "Support for traffic signals" in February this year. Just last week, councillor Atwood acknowledges the need for lights on Richmond Road. But here we are today with a petition that says council does not support lights and councillor Atwood today is on record here saying she also does not support lights. I have put very clearly on the record today, Labour has always supported this intersection being upgraded. The only roadblock is the LMP council not funding it. We do not support this petition response because it does not deal with the petitioners' concerns. This upgrade has been listed for funding for many years. Council officers acknowledge the enhanced safety traffic lights would bring to this, in their words, "heavily trafficked intersection". The new councillor, Lisa Atwood, for this local area and the LMP do not support this intersection upgrade, which is deeply disappointing for my residents in the Morningside Ward and for those in the Doughboy Ward. I will continue to support the residents on this matter and I hope that councillor Atwood sees the light today and votes with us and her new residents for an upgrade, or at least informs us her reasons for not supporting this upgrade.
Excuse me, further speakers? councillor Atwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also rise to speak on item B, a very well known intersection that's recently come into the Doughboy Ward through, Mr. Chair, as councillor Cook just pointed out, the corner of Malloy Road and Richmond Road. Yes, councillor Cook, I do not support the recommendations today, unfortunately, because I don't want to force onto my residents and tell them where we should be building this intersection up, sorry, where we should be building these traffic lights. Let me expand. Last Friday though, there was a crash along Richmond Road. Yes, there was. It was one of at least five serious crashes in the last two years. This long stretch of road does not have traffic lights and it is a thorough fare for commuters heading to the city and the Morningside train station. It also has a main route for parents and carers and buses heading to St Oliver Plunkett and Cannon Hill State School. It's almost impossible for motorists to turn out of many of the streets, including Muir, Stanton Street, Malloy Road, Blackwood Avenue and Imperial Avenue, onto Richmond Road during peak times. And for this reason, I will be writing to residents in the area and continue my conversations with the local schools on where they believe traffic lights would be best suited along Richmond Road. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Further speakers? councillor McLaughlin?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks to councillors Cook and Atwood for their contribution to that debate. Just noting that the petition was of 13 petitioners and seven in the, in the Cannon Hill and Morningside area. This, this is a recommendation by council officers who have assessed it as the traffic volumes there currently as acceptable for current traffic and pedestrian volumes. If, if there are other recommendations that come forward at a future time, given citywide priorities that are applied to the, to infrastructure costs and given that traffic lights are expensive infrastructure items. As, as all councillors know, these matters are prioritised according to where the greatest need is. Should, should this intersection show that it needs an upgrade at a future time, I'm sure that can be considered at a future time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll now put item A. All those who support item A, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, please lower your hands. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. Thank you. The ayes have it. Now on item B, all those who support item B, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, please lower your hands. And those against, please say, please raise your hand and say no.
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 The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Councillor Cook and councillor Cassidy, please ring the bells. All right. Councillors, all those who support item B, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
You're right. Please lower your hands. And all those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
No.
Clerk, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and seven against.
The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, please, councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th, 9th of June, 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Davis. The report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 9th of June, 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. The committee presentation last week was on council's trial of backyard braziers and fire pits for heating. Currently in Brisbane, the lighting of fires is regulated by council's Health and Safety and Amenity Local Law 2009 and the Queensland Government's Fire and Emergency Services Act 1990. Smoke impacts are regulated by Queensland Government's Environmental Protection Act 1994. The trial announced by the Lord Mayor in May lifts restrictions on the use of fire pits and braziers in residential areas currently imposed under the local law. However, the trial does not mean that council will turn a blind eye to excessive smoke nuisances in our suburbs, as the Environmental Protection Act still applies. During the trial, council officers will exercise discretion under the local law when responding to complaints. Council has created a fact sheet on minimising smoke, which provides advice to residents on how to reduce the risk of smoke impacts on neighbouring properties during the trial. There's also a standard Dear Neighbor letter to assist residents in resolving any issues that they might have. The website includes fire safety information to help protect children, which is something I've been working with Kids Safe Queensland directly on. We're also working in partnership with Kids Safe to produce a safety ninja video on backyard fires and campfires. Council has written to the Retailers' Association and other major retailers of fire pits and braziers, asking for them to display safe guidelines for using these products. Committee had two petitions, a petition from residents requesting that council rename Scott Street Park Norman Park as Rollo Park in memory of Brenton Glen Rollo Rollinson, received during the summer recess, and a petition from residents requesting council increase funding for the implementation of the fire security plan for Brisbane local government area. I'll leave debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to speak briefly on item A and B, the presentation on fire pits and also the naming of Rollo Park. Firstly, Mr. Chair, on the committee presentation, item A, the fire pit presentation, Labour is supportive of the fire pit trial, Mr. Chair, but we do have some concerns about the consultation which has occurred, or more importantly, the lack of consultation that has occurred to date in relation to the trial. There have been a number of legitimate concerns that have been raised by experts in relation to an increase in accidents specifically involving children and also respiratory issues for vulnerable groups. I appreciate the commentary that was provided just now by councillor Cunningham about the steps that are being taken specifically in relation to children, but there is further consultation that will need to be done as part of this trial. It is also noted, Mr. Chair, that council will undertake an evaluation of the trial at the end of winter and we would ask that the evaluation call on expert advice, such as the Queensland Fire and Rescue, as well as medical staff who deal with burns and respiratory conditions. There should also be some statistical analysis of any increases in fire related burns during the trial period. Medical professionals have been in contact with my office specifically when this trial was announced and expressed a number of concerns about an observed increase in the number of children suffering bad burns from fire pits during the COVID-19 lockdown. Those have been passed on to the Lord Mayor specifically so that they can be addressed. One of those people includes Dr Bronwyn Griffin, who is a senior researcher at QT's Centre for Children's Burns and Trauma Research. She has also said that, she has spoken personally to a number of medical professionals working in fields such as burns and respiratory conditions, who hold concerns about the trial. They have also written directly to the Lord Mayor about the issues that they wish to raise. So we look forward to seeing the evaluation of the trial coming back to council before there are any amendments to the local laws on this matter. And I would encourage councillor Cunningham, perhaps there would be an opportunity for a further presentation on that issue at that time. On item B, Mr. Chair, the petition for council to rename Scott Street Park in Norman Park in memory of Brenton Glen Rollo Rollinson. Mr. Chair, I was approached by close friends of Rollo to petition council to rename a park, rename a park in close proximity to Norman Creek in memory of Rollo, following his passing in April 2019. I was so pleased to see the overwhelming support of over 1,550 residents from across the city on this petition. Rollo was a local musician, concert promoter and employee of Brisbane City Council. Having played in punk bands since the early eighties, Rollo formed Blowhard in 1989 while living in the inner southeast, eastern suburbs, close to this park. Blowhard toured frequently along Australia's east coast and became the third ever Brisbane punk band to play overseas with a 1996 tour of Japan and Europe. Rollo's talent as a concert promoter also gave many iconic Brisbane acts their start. He released more than 30 albums of up and coming Brisbane artists, a vital outlet for local talent, including Custard, Powderfinger and Regurgitator. Festival organiser Carolyn Bedford spoke for many when she recalled Rollo's legacy. She said, "He was larger than life and had the biggest heart of anyone I ever met. He was always fun and over the top, the life of the party and a driving force behind the Brisbane music scene for decades." He also, Rollo himself, summed up his contribution. He once told writer Daniel Johnson, "I mightn't have made a million dollars doing it, but I had a good time." Rollo, as I said, was employed in council's civil works area for over sixteen years until he passed in April last year. He proudly helped build a better Brisbane. This park naming would reflect his commitment to our city and location reflects his passion for the wildlife of the inner south side creeks. And the countless boat cruise concerts Rollo and Blowhard played on the nearby Brisbane River for over thirty years. His close friend Ben Jones sent me a short statement that I wanted to read into the record as well. He had this to say, Mr. Chair. "The naming of Rollo Park will mean different things to different people, but to all of us who are lucky enough to have Rollo in our lives, it will mean recognition. For his family, it will mean recognition of the caring and kind son, husband, father and uncle that Rollo was to them. For his bandmates and for those who were lucky enough to perform at concerts promoted or organised by Rollo, it will mean recognition of the person who made things happen and started a great many local musicians on the path to future success. And to anyone who ever enjoyed live punk or alternate music in Brisbane, it will be recognition of the unending efforts of a man who created and drove the scene for thirty years." Mr. Chair, I will leave the final word to Blowhard drummer Fred Noonan, who described Rollo's influence by comparing him to a maypole. He said, "You have all these people with these pieces of string dancing around the maypole and Rollo was like our maypole. He was the pole we all danced around, so he held us together. All of our strings were attached to him and when the pole went, we were all just standing there holding a piece of string." I look forward to this naming proceeding through the usual council processes so that we can formalise this naming in the not-too-distant future, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You're here. Further speakers?
Chair.
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I rise in support of item B, the petition to name Scott Street Park in Norman Park Rollo Park in memory of Brenton Glenn Rollison. I actually met Rollo in 2018 at a fundraiser for a local youth mental health charity that I was supporting through the Lord Mayor's suburban initiative fund. I didn't really know him well, but I knew of his reputation. He's an absolute legend of the Brisbane music scene. As councillor Cook said, he fronted Blowhard, which is a ska punk band formed out of the ashes of the hardcore punk bands Bad Ronald and New Improved Testament. He was the front man there for thirty years and really the only person I know with that kind of career longevity is Graham Quirk. He and Blowhard played everywhere from the old Treasury Hotel to Festival Hall and the Livid Festival. He was absolutely at the centre of Brisbane's punk community. And he actually grew up in Mount Gravat. He actually made a song called "Mount Gravat" and is an absolute legend of that suburb. Something that I share with him, I grew up in Mount Gravat as well. He died on Easter Sunday, which was a special weekend that reminds us of the hope and joy of new life. He actually died playing a show at the Brightside, doing what he loved. And I know that many of the people who posted tributes on his page that night said that he died doing what he loved and I don't think anyone would dispute that. We, of course, here in council, will remember his strong passionate love of his family and friends and the world at large. And importantly, as councillor Cook mentioned, his job in council's field services group. He worked on roads, parks, footpaths and drains all around Brisbane as part of the work that he did in FSG. I actually met some of those FSG members at his funeral and it's clear that he made an enormous impact on them and he was very much a mentor and someone who many of the, particularly of the younger members, looked up to. He was literally building a better Brisbane, so much so that he tattooed the Brisbane City Council corporate logo and his payroll number to his arm. This was a man who took his love for council very, very seriously. Today, I'm thinking of his wife Alison, his children, Ateisha, Benjamin and Alex. I know that although this part naming can't replace Rollo, we hope that it serves as recognition of his contribution to Brisbane and the thanks of a grateful city. So I just want to thank councillor Cook for sponsoring this petition and I hope that all councillors will support it.
Further speakers? I see no further speakers. Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, Mr. Chair, I thank councillor Cook for the advice. I look forward to receiving Labour's submission on the fire pit trial in due course. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those against saying no, please lower your hands. Those against, please say no and raise your hands. The ayes have it. Thank you. Councillors, field services, excuse me, the City Standards and Community Health and Safety Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting held on Tuesday the ninth of June 2020 be adopted.
It's been moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Toomey, the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting dated Tuesday the ninth of June 2020 be adopted. There is no debate. Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly before I get on to the committee presentation, I just wanted to have a shout out to Fred and the UA team that have been out there at New Farm Park for the last couple of days. In fact, three days in total at the end of today and potentially tomorrow as well. Under the guidance of Harry and John Charles, who is referred to as JC, they're doing the annual rose pruning out there at New Farm Park. Councillor Howard joined me. At the event, obviously it's in her ward and as a previous chair of field services, she's quite aware of what goes on there. Council has almost seven thousand rose bushes out there in New Farm Park and the idea is to do the pruning all in sort of as close time as possible so that when September rolls around and they're all ready to bloom again, they'll all pretty much bloom at the same time and make another spectacular sight for the residents of Brisbane. So I want to thank them for having me out there this morning and I did manage to prune a few roses and I have a couple of blooms sitting on my desk in my office, which I'm very grateful for. The committee presentation last week was on the Quarry Mobile Screener and that was something that was presented as a result of a purchase from the Stores Board Commission that we made some weeks ago here at ENC. It was a very good presentation, an amazing piece of machinery and I think the people that was in the presentation committee enjoyed it. There were no petitions and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Marks. I'll put the resolution. All those in favour say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Please lower your hands. All those against, please say no and raise your hand.
Do the lights quickly.
All right, I will now, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, please. Councillor Howard.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the ninth of June 2020 be adopted.
I can't see a thing, love.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landis, the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday the ninth of June 2020 be adopted. I hear that you're taking the nighttime economy element of this.
I'm taking the nighttime economy to a new level, Mr. Chair, through you. If you could just give me a couple of minutes while our lights turn back on on level fifteen.
I must call you now, though. Is there any? Do you have?
I do have, I do have a couple of things just before I move to the report. If I can just say that we've, I do have a response to councillor Johnson. Thank you. I do have light now. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a question asked during question time about the AFL field in Chelma known as the Gordon Thompson Oval. And I wanted to let council know that the Surratt administration has committed to upgrading the Chelma Oval, which is across the road from the Gordon Thompson Oval. This project will be done in conjunction with AFL Queensland and Queensland Cricket, which is a priority project for them and which they are also contributing towards. The Gordon Thompson Oval remains a future upgrade project council may undertake, but in this term, our commitment is to the Chelma community is based on the Chelma Oval in partnership with AFL Queensland and Queensland Cricket. Mr. Chair, I also would like to bring to the chamber's attention that one of our connected communities employees was awarded a member of the Order of Australia. Dr John MacPherson from council's Connected Communities branch has been awarded the order as part of this year's Queen's Birthday for his tireless work for people with disability and to access and inclusion. And so many of us know that John has worked for Brisbane City Council for more than forty years, of which he has held a role as a disability officer for twenty-nine of those years. John has used his specialised knowledge to ensure that services and infrastructure provided by Brisbane City Council meets the needs of people with disabilities. In 2012, John was instrumental in developing council's first Brisbane Access and Inclusion Plan. Since then, council has invested more than $230 million in projects to increase accessibility in our city. So that means that more local residents are now able to participate in our beautiful city with more projects underway as part of the city for everyone, our inclusive Brisbane Plan 2019 to 2029, which was released at the end of 2019. John is currently on a temporary secondment to the Department of Transport and Main Roads, where he is leading for Queensland, the modernisation of the disability standards for accessible public transport. These are one of the most important national standards for people with disability as public transport is a critical public service for everyone to be able to independently participate in community life. John is continuing to connect with council by working on some of our smaller projects at a local level, partnering with council's Access and Inclusion Team to develop wayfinding projects for people with vision impairment. We're extremely fortunate and so proud of John to be part of council and for making a difference in people's lives locally, regionally and nationally. So congratulations to John. Mr. Chair, sorry. Mr. Chair, last week I had the pleasure of joining a webinar that council hosted together with CPR Group. CPR Group is Australia's leading sports governance and community development firm. Council engaged CPR Group to help support our community and sporting clubs by giving them the tools they need to adapt to the difficult circumstances brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic. This is just one of the many ways that council is supporting our community and sporting clubs. And of course, this is in addition to the COVID relief package and the $5,000 community sports water rebate that the Lord Mayor has already announced earlier this year. I thought it was a great opportunity to share with the chamber some of the feedback that council has received from just a couple of the more than 100 clubs that registered to participate in last week's webinar. From our Mount Gravat Junior Rugby League club, they shared that the webinar on financial management and club reactivation was great. We have had excellent support from CPR Group with our club and they would definitely participate again and would be interested in presentations on financial management and volunteer engagement. So council's website will be updated shortly with the webinar content and I strongly urge you to promote this to your clubs as a valuable resource. Mr. Chair, turning to the committee presentation from last week, we had the branch manager of library services deliver what we have done during this last financial year. It was a great presentation, as it always is, and we were able to talk about the upgrades to Ashgrove Stones Corner and Sangate libraries. And we're very proud that we continue to deliver these improved library services for the residents of Brisbane. And it was also, the Lord Mayor announced earlier this year, that we'd be looking forward to delivering further library upgrades over this term, including refurbishments to Everton Park and Zilmia libraries. We also had four petitions, which I will leave debate for the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the presentation of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, as stated by the chair, was on libraries and there was a series of petitions that followed requesting various libraries across the city be upgraded. So clause B, the petition was to upgrade the Everton Park Library in the MacDowell Ward and the response was the petition is listed for funding in the 2024 term of council and councillor Davis supported the request, the response. Likewise, in relation to clause C, where Zilmia is to be upgraded in 2024 as well, and councillor Cassidy is happy. And then comes clause D, which relates to Callumvale Award, representing for the time being by councillor Owen. This award with how many libraries in it, Mr. Chair? A big fat zero. And the response to the petition requesting construction of a library and community hub, and I quote, "There are no currently, no plans for a new library to be constructed in Callumvale Ward." But the response from councillor Owen was, "She's been consulted and supports the recommendation."
Chair.
If I was a local resident of Callumvale Ward, I would be very disappointed with that. And is this the same councillor Owen who dropped twelve and a half percent of the vote at the last election? No wonder Labor candidate James Martin was able to achieve such a great swing to him if this is councillor Owen's approach. So instead of supporting her local residents, councillor Owen is happy to toe the party line and do nothing. No wonder she's on the slide. And her approach is contrast with that shown by councillor Griffith, who is responding to the petition in his ward and he does not support the recommendation that Maruka not get a library. And that shows the difference between our councillors seriously representing.
Point of order to you, councillor Murphy.
Will councillor Cumming take a question?
No, not today. So that's the difference between a serious councillor like councillor Griffith and a sellout councillor like councillor Owen.
Further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I rise to speak to item B, the petition for an upgrade to the Everton Park Library. Mr. Chair, as you well know, the Everton Park Library is one of our smaller suburban libraries and this petition was about upgrading the current facility to include more modern features which reflect recent upgrades to other council libraries across the city. And although it is one of our smaller libraries, it is much loved and sees almost 48,000 visitors every year and around 7,000 people actually attended learning programmes in the last twelve months. And the library has served our community faithfully for over fifty years, but as our community continues to grow, it was time for an upgrade to be considered to service that growth in population. So I was very excited with the response to the petition that this project is now listed for funding. Mr. Chair, there are so many possibilities for what a new library can provide our community. A larger dedicated children's reading area for our young ones to learn and socialise and more general reading spaces and additional computers and desks. And it would be fantastic to have community meeting spaces, which currently are limited in number in our local area. Having secure after hours access would also help ensure that these spaces are more available for local residents to use. Mr. Chair, in addition to this, improved access for people with disability will also help to ensure that the library resources are available to all residents. Council have also acquired two blocks next to the library and this will complement the commitment that the Lord Mayor announced to upgrade the adjacent Fallon Park with a brand new playground. Fallon Park sits behind the library and just last week, some access improvements were made to the existing infrastructure. So all in all, this will mean that a wonderful new precinct will be created in our local area. A new library, expanded green space and a new playground that will provide significant benefits and improve lifestyle and livability opportunities, not only for the Everton Park community, but for residents right across the MacDowell Ward for many years to come. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. And can I move, can I just ask that item D and item E are taken sereatum? Both those separately for voting.
For voting? D alone and E alone, sereatum for voting.
Yep, thank you. Thanks, Miss Chair. This is always a fascinating report and it really does highlight the difference between what the Liberals, this LMP administration says and actually what it does. And it's certainly very clear here that they don't deliver for the community. Great that Everton Park's getting an upgrade and that's based on 117, 171 signatures. And great that Zilmia is getting an upgrade and I think that is now in councillor Cassidy's area and that's also. and that's also based on fifty one signatures. But very disappointing for Callumvale, the only ward in the city that does not have a library. And what does that say about how the people of Callumvale are being treated? And what does that say about how the councillor out there, the LMP councillor, represents her community? And I know that I used to represent a large sway of people out there at Polara, which I think now has several thousand or is getting several thousand homes. And people out there are demanding services. They're demanding footpaths. They're demanding, they're demanding bus services. And they're demanding a library. And unfortunately now, they have a councillor who's not prepared to deliver for them. Sorry, I'm being interrupted by a puppy dog. They, they now have a councillor out there who isn't delivering for them. So I think that's a very disappointing result for them and it is reflective in the result that councillor Angela Owen got at the last election, where she was almost knocked off, off her perch, off representing the people of of her ward by James Martin. And certainly I understand that he will continue to work in that ward and and wants to represent those people and actually wants to provide council services to those people. So that's what it's about. It's about who will provide the services and who should represent them. In relation to my own ward, in relation to Maruka Ward, I have been talking for a number of years about getting a library at our our suburban shopping centre. I, that needs to be done. That has been a constant theme that I've raised with this council. It is something, there is actually a building sitting vacant now that could be used, it could be purchased. My understanding is in the several million dollar range. It is actually there, ready to go, ready to use in the middle of the shopping centre. What an opportunity for this council. And yet this council has failed to do that. And yet I hear from the administration that they want to do massive growth in the area. They're moving urban renewal from the inner city to Maruka, Salisbury and Nathan. Well, here's the opportunity to do something to back that growth.
Point of order, Mister Chair?
Point of order to you councillor Adams?
Will councillor Griffiths take a question?
No, won't take a question.
No, he has declined. Please continue.
Here's the opportunity to put a facility, a council facility in place that could support the massive growth that we're going to be seeing in Maruka Ward, courtesy of the LMP.
Point of order, Mister Chair?
No, won't take a question.
Point of order, Mister Chair?
Point of order to you councillor Adams?
Will councillor Griffiths take a question about the new community hub we bought?
You know that. No, no, he's already declined as well. So councillor Griffiths, please continue.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. The community hub that they put in place courtesy of a federal Labor government providing three million dollars. I am interested in seeing services in the area and I will fight for services in the area. And residents have voted for me for services in the area. In fact, councillor Adams, that's why I got seventy percent two party preferred. That's why the Green candidate actually supported me in this this motion put forward. And it's actually why, while your own candidate actually said to me he thought this was a good idea and a good idea for the community of Maruka. That was the the person, the LMP stood up, who, I'm not even sure if he lived in Brisbane. But it's interesting, Mister Chairman, that we still have this administration not wanting to support services for the residents of Brisbane. It's disappointing that they're wanting to to put growth, massive growth into our suburbs and not provide the infrastructure for that growth. And I'll keep calling this administration out because that's what I got voted for by the people in my community to do. And that's what this administration needs opposition councillors to do. So I'm very disappointed with this this petition. I won't be supporting it and I think it really exemplifies the hypocrisy of the LMP administration in not delivering services to people of Brisbane. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Landers?
Thank you, Chair. I wish to speak on item C. I may have mentioned once or twice to the chamber how wonderful the new Brackenridge Library is and the vibrant community hub it has created for residents in my ward. And we welcomed and embraced that facility. Pre-COVID, the increase in patronage was testament to its success. The designated children's space and generous meeting rooms have been standout additions and incredibly well used and in particular, meeting rooms have provided a dedicated and secure location for many of our community groups to meet and coordinate local projects. Brisbane libraries are not just a space for reading or loaning a book, but are now community hubs that provide facilities and activities for every age and interest. So following on from the Brackenridge Library upgrade, Kimberly Washington, the LMP candidate for Deegan Ward, and I both felt it was important that Zilmia Library should be upgraded. We wanted to ensure the residents and community groups local to Zilmia Library had the same access to modern facilities and meeting spaces that now featured in other upgraded Northside libraries. And importantly, we wanted to ensure it continued to be a vibrant and welcoming community space. While Zilmia Library is not physically within my ward, many of the residents who form its patronage are. I'm excited to see that, following my petition advocating for residents in Zilmia and its surrounds, that Zilmia Library will be upgraded and that councillor Cassidy gave it bipartisan support.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. Just briefly on items A through E. It's really fascinating when all you've got to go on is the actual reports and you read them and there's lots of things that stick out to you. So this will be very brief. But I just want to say, the one thing that I really noticed of interest was the libraries being upgraded or that are definitely going to be upgraded, which includes Zilmia and Everton Park, they're both on the Northside. And no problems with those. That's all, all good news and tick the box and the councillors are happy and, you know. It's, it's all, it's all good. The libraries that aren't getting upgraded or built at Callumvale and at Maruka, which I know councillor Griffiths and Miss Molly are very proud of, on the South Side. So I just say to the people of Brisbane, you know, this goes on week in and week out, that one side of Brisbane tends to get more funding and more priority and the other side of Brisbane continually misses out.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Well, thanks very much, Chair. I just want to speak briefly on the the committee presentation and also the petition, item C, so, which I've sort of, sort of linked in what I'll say here today. The the presentation obviously talked about the Sandgate Library being upgraded, which is a commitment and a promise that I made in the twenty sixteen election. And I'm very proud to say that I was able to deliver that on behalf of the community. It was wonderful to be there at the opening and officially open that alongside Lord Mayor Adrian Schriner. It was a great community, a community day there at the Sandgate Library. And the Zilmia Library upgrade, which councillor Landers has mentioned, was an interesting one. She launched a petition with some fanfare, I suppose, not really great fanfare. And she managed to get about fifty signatures, most of which came from Fitzgibbon and Aspli and Brackenridge and Castledine. And she mentioned the LMP candidate who ran against me and they attended Zilmia, I presume, probably for the first and last time, I suspect, in that part of Zilmia. And I suppose the Labor vote in Zilmia at the most recent council election, where we promised to upgrade the Zilmia Library as well as O'Callaghan Park and make that the premier sporting precinct on the Northside, really struck a chord with people out there, Chair. And the result that that we saw there, where the LMP vote tanked by ten or fifteen percent in Zilmia, was quite telling about how the community out there views the way in which the administration treats its suburban libraries. As an opportunity to launch a bit of a pre-election petition and that's about it. But I'm confident that I'll be able to deliver the Zilmia Library upgrade on behalf of my community, just as I did the Sandgate Library upgrade last term.
Further speakers? councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I would like to speak on item D and in respect of some of the other comments that have been made to this particular item. I I find it very interesting that those in the opposition have made very unsurprisingly political and derogatory personal attacks through what they've said, rather than focusing on the matter at hand. And I think this is partly because some of these ALP councillors just don't actually know the facts. They don't do their homework. But then again, they've never let the facts get in the good way of their storytelling. And we all know that they like their storytelling. But let's really have a look at the truth behind this, have a look at the actual petition. And I'm going to actually highlight the difference to what we do in the LMP administration compared to what they do in the ALP. Well, on this side of the chamber, we're about what's genuine and they're obviously about playing the politics because this petition had twenty six signatures on it. Oh, we had the candidate plus ten that actually lived in Callumvale Ward. And let's put the facts on the table because to go from Parkinson to the nearest library, Sunny Bank Hill Shopping Town, the Sunny Bank Hill Shopping Centre, it's about five kilometres, under ten minutes. It's accessible by public transport. From Drew Vale to that same library, approximately five kilometres, seven minutes. And councillor Marks, I note that there's seven of your residents on this petition and I know that this particular library is right on our borders. And it's on one side of Compton Road, which is the border of the Callumvale and Runcorn Ward. So it's not that far away, but for even some of councillor Marks's residents from the ones that live in Beane Lee Road, it's only six minutes and three point eight kilometres. My former deputy principal of my primary school, who lives in in Runcorn Ward as well, it's only four kilometres, sorry, four minutes and two point six kilometres from hers. So this is the thing, they don't want people to know that this library is right.
They're not getting a library, Angela.
No interjections, please. No interjections.
That this library is right on the border of two wards and we do not make the boundaries of our wards, but we need to ensure that services are available. And I just want to go back to a comment that was made by the councillor for Maruka about some of the residents that he no longer represents that have come back into my ward, those residents that are living in Polara. And he made this furious claim that the Polara residents are demanding a library. And yet there is not one single resident on this petition that lives in Polara. Now councillor Howard and I have had extensive discussions in regards to how we service the residents in Polara for
Axy?
library services. And this is very important because
Not well. You don't serve some well.
No, councillor Griffiths, please allow councillor Owen to give her presentation silence. Councillor Owen?
But this is just typical, Mister Chair. Thank you for your intervention there because this is what the Labor Party like to do. They don't like the cold, hard facts and they just want to turn it into a personal attack.
How much did you vote for?
No. Councillor Griffiths, I've asked you to cease interjecting. If you do so again, I will formally warn you. Councillor Owen?
They are all about trying to create jobs for their mates in George Street and particularly the candidate because they've mentioned him and he works for one of their state mates. Oh, and when we look at this petition, there's a number of other people, at least three names that I recognise, that are also working for state members. Oh, and one of them actually challenged that person for pre-selection to run against me. So I reckon he might have a bit of a challenge on his hands the way that the Labor Party factional games play out. But this is about making sure residents have their services. Councillor Howard and I, along with the library services manager, have been having many discussions about how we service people. And through COVID nineteen, we have seen how library services have morphed into not just being about bricks and mortar. It's about delivering services through digital platforms, delivering services to elderly residents in their homes. It's about looking at ways that we can allocate the pop-up library to visiting the parks. So for those on the other side of the chamber that want to play the negatives, that want to play the personal attacks, go away and play your personal attacks somewhere else because I am focused, along with my colleagues in this administration, in delivering services for the community. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Mister Chair, and thank everyone for for the debate. And through you, Mister Chair, to councillor Griffiths, he would have had a library in his ward right now if his party had not closed the library at Acacia Ridge.
That's exactly what councillor Howard.
Also say, Mister Chair, that this LMP administration has never closed a library, which cannot be said by those on the other side. And just to, just to finalise the conversation, I heard councillor Griffiths.
I'm happy if you open it again, Vicky. I'm happy if you open it again, Vicky.
Councillor, councillor Griffiths, I consider you're displaying unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section twenty one five of the Meetings Local Law two thousand and one. I hereby request that you cease interjecting and refrain from exhibiting that conduct. Councillor Howard?
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair. And Mister Chair, I'll just finish by saying that councillor Griffiths mentioned the word hypocrisy. Well, how do you spell hypocrisy? A L P. Thank you.
I'll now put items A, B and C. Item A, B and C, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. All those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. On item D, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. On item D, all those against, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Thank you. The ayes have it.
Division?
The division called by councillor Strunk.
Vision?
Called by councillor Cumming. Please ring the bells.
What's that? Okay?
Okay, someone's, all right. Councillors, all those in favour of item D, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Please lower your hands. And those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
No.
Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour and seven against.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Now on item E, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands and all those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division? Vision?
Councillor Strunk and councillor Cassidy, please ring the bells. On item E, all those in favour, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Please lower your hands. Those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
No.
Aye.
Please lower your hands. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and seven against.
Thank you, the ayes have it. Councillors, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, please. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of June, 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang. The report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 9th of June, 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Allen? Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the honourable year councillor Johnston.
Yes, I seek the furthering following, I seek the following further information based on the report. Just with respect to item B, I just would like to confirm that CHF is referring to Swiss Franks. And if that's the case, which I think it probably is, whether or not the balance of Swiss Franks, which is some $93,000, nearly $94,000, if that money is being kept to satisfy the remainder of the contract, or if that funding is going to be converted back to Australian dollars, I'd just like to know what's happening to the balance of the funding referred to in paragraph 10.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At last week's committee meeting, we had a presentation from our chief information officer on delivering responsive and productive IT environments for council. And in particular, it focused on council's move to the working from home arrangements, which were initiated as a result of the COVID pandemic. And the presentation covered a number of points, including council's technology at a glance, responding to the need to work from home, impact of the move to work from home initiative, and enhancing staff productivity through new tools. In the context of council's technology at a glance, the CIO provided us with a high level overview of the environment that she manages. It includes 8,000 active users, more than 8,000 active users in council, 4,200-plus staff desktops, 3,000 staff laptops, a range of other IT support infrastructure, such as data centres, servers and what have you. So the internal IT infrastructure is a very significant operation and it covers a lot of hardware and obviously software applications and has a pretty significant workforce to underpin the delivery of IT services to council. Now, in the context of working from home, when the decision was made to establish a work from home function and obviously to allow literally thousands of council employees to shift to working from home, this was a very, very significant undertaking. And in the end, we had many thousands of staff working from home and all of them needed to be set up to work from home with appropriate access and security protocols in place. So the move to working from home occurred surprisingly rapidly for such a large deployment of staff and IT equipment to their homes. And so it was certainly a credit to the team who supported that move. In terms of how specific divisions have managed to continue their work in this sort of COVID environment where they've had to work remotely, we've had significant engagement, or the IT team have had significant engagement with Brisbane Infrastructure, the Administration and Governance Team, city planning, lifestyle and community services and organisational services, all of them have had nuanced requirements that the IT team have needed to support. And obviously, in the case of Brisbane Infrastructure, a lot of that has needed to be mobile because those people are out on the road and a lot of the work they do is in the field. So certainly, it wasn't as if it was going to be a vanilla solution for everybody, depending on the nature of their work and where they were working from, bespoke arrangements needed to be made. In terms of the overall impact of the move to work from home initiative, there was obviously very significant increased utilisation of our remote access functionality and using tokens to get into the council IT systems. There were a lot more activity and call upon our service centres to provide additional information. So the scope of a number of the activities that IT undertake changed and the, obviously the mix of effort changed to reflect the fact that staff were working from home. In addition to what's currently happening, there was obviously a number of new tools that needed to be instituted in order to make staff working from home as efficient as possible. And a number of those focused on not only improving teamwork, and we've obviously started to use platforms like Zoom and Microsoft Teams, but also a range of other applications that enhance that working from home environment. So a really interesting presentation and it certainly highlighted what was really quite an extraordinary deployment of IT and IT resources to support the work from home requirements. Now, in the context of councillor Johnston's question there, look, I do know the Swiss Franks' holding was taken out to support the purchase of the Metro vehicle. And if those funds aren't required in the longer run, yes, they would be converted back to Australian dollars. But yeah, we would have no obvious need to hold a Swiss Franks investment in the longer term. But obviously, the timing of that conversion back to Australian dollars would be made based on the advice of bankers. So other than that report, so the Bank and Investment April report was also presented at the committee presentation and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? So I see no hands. Councillor Allen.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, those against, please lower your hands. Those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a petition for a pedestrian footpath in Wright Street, Balmoral.
Councillor Allen.
I've got a petition to stop trucks on Northgate Road, Northgate.
Any other petitions? May I please have a resolution to accept them?
Mr. Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
It's been moved by councillor Lander, seconded by councillor Hutton, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any matters of general business? Are there any statements required as a result of the office of the independent assessor? No. Councillors, are there any items of general business? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to acknowledge some South Side residents in my general business tonight. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge Alchester resident Winifred Johnson, who has recently celebrated her 104th birthday. And because of all the restrictions, we haven't been able to have the celebrations as we usually do. But Winifred is a local inspiration to everyone who knows her and she's very much a favourite in our local community. So I'd like to put it on the record, a very happy 104th birthday to Winifred Johnson. I'd also like to acknowledge two gentlemen who are very special on the South Side of Brisbane, who have received Order of Australia medals in the Queen's Birthday honours list. And that is Mario Panisi OAM and Tony Stevenson OAM. The Panisi family have certainly called Calenvale home since the early 1980s. And it is with pride that I acknowledge the awarding of Mr. Mario Panisi and OAM in these Queen's Birthday honours lists. Mario has worked extensively to create awareness of football requirements. He is an experienced life sciences professional and industry advocate. He is a dedicated board member of the Queensland Eye Institute and he has been awarded his OAM for significant service to the biomedical sector, to commercialisation initiatives and to research. So I know that his family are extremely proud and he has also got very close ties to not only Griffith University, but also through his advisory committee roles at the University of Queensland and QUT. So congratulations, Mario. I'd also like to acknowledge one of my national servicemen. And as patron of the National Servicemen's Association of Queensland, it is with great pride that I acknowledge Mr. Anthony Athol Stevenson OAM, who's known to all of us as Tony, service number 1/719359. And Tony lives in Tarrag India and he's been awarded a Medal of the Order of Australia for service to veterans and their families. And certainly, he has dedicated so much time and so much voluntary work for the Nashos Association, but also for RSL Queensland. And I know councillor Cunningham has met Tony and she actually came out and met Tony and Bev when they had their 60th wedding anniversary. And unfortunately, Bev passed away in January this year. And I know she would be smiling down right now, knowing that it's wonderful that Tony has received this recognition because he's a very, very humble man, as is Mario, and they never take the credit for themselves. They always acknowledge everybody else around them and they are just absolutely wonderful gentlemen. But Tony was actually part of the first intact in 1956 with the 11th National Service Training Battalion at WACO. He's served the National Servicemen's Association as state vice president. He's a life member. He has been, he's currently serving as a state welfare officer and the president of the National Servicemen's Association Brisbane South Branch. He's also been, he's currently president of Salisbury RSL subbranch. His main priority has always been the welfare of national servicemen and he was heavily involved in the approval of the veterans card. He's a life subscribed member of the Royal Australian Artillery. He also enjoys participating in his local neighbourhood watch committee, as well as lawn bowls and golf when time does permit. But Tony puts in so much work and so does Mario. And they are just pure everyday examples of the genuine people in our local communities, particularly on the South Side, who are truly, truly deserving of recognition for their efforts. So congratulations to Mario Panisi and Tony Stevenson and well deserved. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listen, I want to speak tonight about a couple of community groups, organisations and a couple of individuals or family. The first one is the Bluefin Fishing Club has reopened Thursday, the 11th. And I'll tell you what, my local community, especially the Anala, Durack and Richlands area and now ever increasingly Forest Lake, love this fishing club. It is the largest fishing club in Australia. They have thousands of patrons and members, I should say. And everyone was really hanging out for this club to open up again because they were, for a lot of the pensioners and others, it was like the second home to them. They put on fantastic meals at a really reasonable price. But this club doesn't just do that sort of service, but they also give community grants as well to a lot of organisations and groups in the area. And we hope that their level of contribution this year won't be too affected with the pandemic that has caused all of the clubs and hotel, well, sorry, clubs to remain closed for a long period of time, actually, as it turned out. I took my team up there for lunch earlier this week and the meals are just unbelievably large now. So much so, you could order one meal and just share it with someone else. It's that large. I think they're sort of copying some of those American meals that we see on TV from time to time. Anyways, I'd just like to congratulate Peter Purins, who's the general manager, who has really kept his group together through very testing and challenging times. Steve Samonis, the current president, and David Watson, the function manager, who's just thrilled to be able to do what he does so well. Like some of the other councillors, it's really nice when the Queen's honours come down or those couple of times a year where honours are actually bestowed on some of our residents, very deserving residents, of course. And Bill Marklew OAM, his name appeared on the list this year. Now, Bill was awarded this very prestigious medal for his industrial relations work, particularly to the role of trade union movements. I've known Bill for probably about 20 years. And the three or four words that really express what I think of him is, and how he undertakes his work is justice, fairness and equality in the workplace. And he epitomises what trade union men and women have done for many years, especially those that take on executive roles. A family, so a few weeks ago, the McDonald family of Duen Dalla came to my attention because they opened up a Dagwood Dog stand in Blunder Road. Because this family has undertaken this sort of work in and around Australia, mostly in Queensland and northern New South Wales. They attended over 40 ECAs and other events, 40 of these events a year. And of course, when the COVID-19 hit, they were reduced to almost no income at all and they were really struggling. So they told me to look after the kids and of course, a couple of their workers who had been with them for many, many years. So they decided to, they have a licence, a food licence, it's not a truck, it's a trailer, but they have a proper licence and everything. So they can operate on the side of the road. But they decided to operate from within their property along Duen Dalla and didn't quite understand all the regulations in regards to that. But with the help of Brisbane City Council and the state government, they're processing their application for temporary use for that space. And but they, so that application's going through at the moment. But if you're wanting a Dagwood dog and some of that fancy or fun food, Blunder Road, Duen Dalla, just down from the McDonald's on the same side, if you're wanting to sample a Dagwood dog, it's a very special treat every year that most of us access through the ECA. Finally, the Multicultural Youth and Family Festival Short Film Competition 2020. This was initiated by the, under the partnerships of Q Pass, Anala Community House, Excess and Office Works, came together to initiate this festival. Because, you know, the kids were all sort of trapped at home and they were wanting to give something tangible for the kids or young men and women to do, maybe while they're at home, to display their, either their culture, whether it be food, dance, music and/or storytelling. There is $5,000 worth of prizes. Now, they were asked to put together a video, bit like, maybe a little bit longer than those on TikTok. But anyways, the cut-off period is the 19th of June for- um, uh, for, um, for their, uh, submissions. Uh, as I say, uh, five thousand dollars worth of amazing prizes. I, I was able to support them, uh, mark, uh, not to the extent of the five thousand dollars, obviously, but, uh, uh, we, we did support this, uh, very worthy, uh, event and, uh, we hope to, uh, see the, uh, the outcome, uh, and the, and the, uh, and the videos that come forth from that. Uh, I'm sure it will be very entertaining. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Um, thanks very much, Chair. I, um, speak briefly tonight on, uh, the City Hall Timpanum. Uh, we have to face up to the fact, Chair, that Daphne Mayo's sculpture, uh, above City Hall, no matter what its intent causes offence to many people, indigenous and non-indigenous alike. For too long, we've ignored the reality and it's time to start a conversation about how to move forward as a city and a community. Uh, I want to get one thing straight from the outset here, that, uh, I'm not talking about and I don't think other people are. Talking about tearing it down. Uh, when I spoke with, uh, prominent indigenous elder, Wayne Wharton, uh, he agreed we should leave the Timpanum in place, but discuss its part in the history of this fascinating and fantastic building. Uh, Wayne wants to broaden the debate to include other aspects of Brisbane's indigenous history, including uh, memorializing the warrior Dundalai, who was hanged in eighteen fifty-five on what is now the G P O. I was amazed to, uh, find today on council's website absolutely no mention of the Timpanum. Uh, we talk about the clock tower, about the city hall organ, where the sandstone and marble used in the construction came from, but nothing on this sculpture. It is a part of our history that opens the door on another significant part of our history and it's time to start that discussion. We know what it depicts is the brutal past of Brisbane, a past that saw the murder and massacre of Aboriginal people in their hundreds and thousands. That's not the Brisbane of today, but it is our history and we shouldn't whitewash it. This council supported the Uluru statement from the heart about a year ago. We were one of the largest organizations to have supported that campaign for constitutional recognition of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people at the time. One of the key tenants of that amazing national document was truth telling as an essential part of us moving forward as a community. Well, this is part of truth telling. We should not be afraid of the truth. We need to openly talk about it before we can move on from it. So I, um, would invite each and every councillor, uh, to join in that conversation.
Uh, further speakers? Councillor Shree?
Thanks, Chair. And good on you, councillor Cassidy. It's good to see you jumping on board with that discussion. Um, I rise to speak briefly about Volta Street bike lanes and, and the need for safer cycling infrastructure within the Gabboard. I'm, I'm mindful that the council budget comes out tomorrow and I'll be watching that really closely with interest. But I just wanted to again place on the record and flag my support for temporary, uh, trial infrastructure to be implemented as soon as possible, even as, as we conduct consultation on permanent solutions and, uh, long-term hard infrastructure, so to speak. So councillors might have seen that other councils, such as Brisbane City Council, uh, sorry, such as, um, councils down in Sydney are, are now introducing temporary bike lanes where they use paint and temporary barriers and bollards to convert underutilized road space into safe separated bike lanes. And the process essentially involves try and see, that put something down, see how it go, gets used and learn from that experience by watching, um, how cyclists adapt to the new environment, how motorists adapt to the new environment before making per, um, permanent changes. So I want to again emphasize the importance of per, funding for permanent bike lanes along Volta Street. But particularly draw to the attention of councillor McLaughlin and councillor Murphy, the value of experimenting with some form of temporary solution so that we can at least start some changes on the ground and, and bring the community along for the journey. It's much easier for the community to understand bike lane proposals when we can show them something practically and say, well, look for the next, for the next month or two, we're going to trial it and this is how it's going to look. Or, um, even, even if it's just on weekends, for example, where during weekdays the road remains in its current format, but on, on weekends, we put out some temporary barriers and trial temporary bike lanes. I'm willing to support these kinds of approaches and I, um, uh, there's a few mechanisms within the state government's T M R guidelines that make it quite easy to do so. Um, it doesn't need to be a particularly expensive undertaking. Um, and, and those sorts of temporary solutions can, can be a really good way to learn from how the community responds and to inform decisions about how permanent infrastructure is designed. So I don't yet know whether there'll be funding for the Volta Street bike lanes in the coming council budget. I really, really hope there will be. Uh, it's, it's probably my highest priority bike lane project, but, um, in the meantime, and, and regardless of whether we get funding for permanent infrastructure in the coming council budget, I'd strongly encourage the council administration to consider some form of temporary solution, not just for Volta Street, but also potentially for Hardgrave Road, so that we can connect local residents to the local primary school and the local high school. There are soon to be twelve hundred students at Western State Primary School and there are three thousand three hundred students at Brisbane State High School. So that's a huge number of, of school students just within, um, that four one oh one peninsula, not to mention, uh, the very large Somerville House and St Lawrence's that are a little further along Volta Street. So when you add it all up, there's, there's well over five thousand school students who, in one form or another, are traveling along parts of Volta Street in South Brisbane and West End. Five thousand is a lot of school students. Um, and certainly the most, most of them are traveling via active and public transport because if they were all driving, we'd all be gridlocked all the time. Most parents are already trying to support their kids to travel by active transport in the inner city. And there's really, really strong demand from parents and from the local school P N C communities to see some improvements to safe cycling infrastructure along those corridors. I'm also hearing from local businesses, from yoga studios, from dance studios, from the local butcher, from, uh, clothing retail and, and jewelry retail, um, storeholders, that they all want to see separated bike lanes along Volta Street as well. Um, this is something that has fairly broad community support and naturally there will always be a few objectors and a few people who are concerned about these kinds of changes. But I'm, I'm feeling really confident that this idea has very broad, um, su- support from a wide cross-section of society. And I really hope we see funding for it in the council budget tomorrow, but, um, uh, equally importantly, I hope the council administration will consider experimenting with some form of staged temporary trial, so we can at least get some temporary bike lanes out there on the ground while we conduct community consultation about permanent bike lane infrastructure down the track. Thanks.
Further speakers? I see no hands. Um, thank you, everybody. Good night. Declare the meeting closed.
Bye.
See you tomorrow.